All right, welcome everybody. I'm hereby opening the public hearing. On the local law to expand the residency allowance for appointed public officers in the town of Caroline. And so we will be taking public comment. Taking public comment from people who have signed up there and people who are attending remotely. If you're on the Zoom call and wish to speak, then go ahead and raise your hand. So we have you noted and we'll, we'll call on you. And speakers have three minutes to speak and we'll be collecting comments for our consideration. When we, when we discuss the, the local laws or adopting them or whatever in our business meeting. Okay, without further ado. And if speakers would, would stand right over there next to Bruce Murray's water bottle. That would be great. And then Jesse.
Is it possible to get a podium up here?
So, well, I mean, if you just stand right there, Jesse can focus the, the camera on you quite nicely. So.
So that we can get a podium so the rest are.
Okay, we can work on that. So.
Okay, thank you.
Without further ado.
Can you give us a little overview of where we're at with that law before we speak?
Sure. Excuse me, I, I will give a brief summary of it. So the. By New York State town law, public, appointed public officers are residents of the town. They're supposed to be electors of the town. But you can ask the local law to expand residency. The Tompkins County has a, a policy of allowing public officers to serve who are either residents of Tompkins County or physically adjoining counties. And that's what we're proposing tonight. I believe it was 2019, we did amend our, where we passed a local law and that's, we're modifying that local law tonight. That local law was to expand residency for appointed public officers in the town of Caroline. To allow residency in the town or adjoining towns. We've simply expanded it a bit. And so, and that is to increase the. You know, the eligibility pool for qualified applicants. And so we've decided that that's in the best interests of the town. So that's why we're, we're considering that local law. And it is, the justifications are, are written in the, in the local law itself. So you can, you can see them there. So without further ado, I do want to move to the public hearing and the first person on the list is Bruce.
I'm sorry for my three.
Sorry. So that, that, that would be the positions of code officer, deputy clerk and highway assistant. So.
And all these other committees.
Those are not appointed public officers.
Okay, and if a board member was to drop out and you had 4.1 for the remainder, how does that work? If you lost a board member today.
Right.
And there's not an election total member.
Right.
You have 4.1, right? It has nothing to do with this.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
It has nothing to do with this.
But that, that would be an elected official.
Even though you're appointing.
Right, we're appointing for the interim, but then they would have to run for that position at the next election. So.
By state law.
Yeah.
So it's just three positions.
Correct. So.
And is it the highway supervisor or?
No, 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 it's the assistant to the highway superintendent. He has discretion to hire and same with the deputy clerk for the clerk and same with the code officer for the supervisor. So. Okay, without further ado, I would like to open the meeting for again, three minutes. And Bruce Murray, you're, you're first.
Okay, I'd just like to clarify what you just said.
Okay.
You said, this one drops off the board, then somebody is appointed to fill that term. You don't have to run then. So you couldn't appoint somebody who didn't live in the town of Caroline for that position.
All right. No, wait, what? No, sorry, no.
We could not, he said, we could not, and I agree with that.
It has nothing to do with the law.
Okay, that's good. And yeah, that was my question, one of the questions was who, who are the appointed officers? The other thing was. In the first last draft under, it was number three, you said certain officers would be able to be, you know, appointed from other places. I kind of wondered what the certain ones, it's not in the new one, it's in the last one you handed out. And the other thing is, you said that. That has other municipalities have been observed where it's worked well. I was just wondering what other municipalities were observed. And I feel that there are some positions like say deputy highway officer that should be between town and town.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there any hands raised? Okay, thank you.
Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to speak. Before I get to my remarks specific to this new law. Let's take a moment to reflect. And think how fortunate we are to have someone in our midst. Who with all this turmoil. Is always there for all of us. Jesse Townsend. Answers emails, phone calls, FOIA requests, collects our taxes, listens and is always friendly and supportive without taking sides. Jesse. You are the glue that holds us together.
Here, here.
We could not function without you. The proposed law, I ask of the board. And this ties into the zoning law as well. What's next? Or possibly I should say here. Who's next? The highway superintendent, Jesse's job, site planning review committee members, planning board, board members. And if after passage of this law, you receive equally qualified candidates, one from Caroline and one from Lansing. Who gets the nod? Marcus made it very clear that his choice would not be Caroline. Perhaps I am wrong. I sure hope so. Speaking of laws, I propose that if the zoning initiative is not stopped before a vote. That the board and the town consider making the vote necessary for passage, not a simple But a super majority. Thank you.
Harry Corr. Okay, you just signed up. Yep, okay, thank you. Kathy Mix.
Mark signed me up somewhere.
Hi, I. Thank you, Josh, for all that you do. I believe outside opinions can be very valuable to assist the town in what we do. However, I think that if you're appointing somebody to be part of a town office, I really do believe that it wants to be a town person who does this. I mean, we opened it up to be adjoining towns and I think that's close enough, but I really do believe that we need to stay in our own home. Because I think you have to have meat in the game or skin in the game, so to speak, in order to be able to participate in, you know, the town businesses and so on and so forth. I mean, I really think that going out of the county is too far, but I think that you could utilize people from outside of the area in other capacities of liaisons and so on and so forth. So that's nice and thank you.
One of my questions was the appointed physicians, specifically what they are, and we already answered that. And I will follow what RC said, it's one more, it's one less thing that we have to say again, and it's just, it's going to go and go and go. And I've never been to jail, but I feel really hand hot and it is not a good feeling. And I don't think anybody feels like they have any, anything and anything anymore in this. If we're going too far, I mean, just, we need to not be doing this because we're distracted with the zoning. And I think there's this divide and conquer mentality, let's do some of this stuff while everybody is, got their focus elsewhere. And I think it's a bad timing and I, if you, I agree with the liaison, somebody that can assist or kind of guide people, but people should have, that should be a part of the town or next door so that we really, there's some cohesion that way, not just somebody and pardon the rudeness, but I think then it becomes a cherry picking of who's willing to align with the certain agendas of people. And I, I think that that is not fair to the residents of this town. That's very true.
You have a point.
So two quick things for my main point. One is, I do agree with what Kathy said and Cindy also, that I like the point about the skin and game, and I, I think that is very meaningful. And if I'm gonna have to take orders from somebody, say a code officer, I'd rather at least take it from somebody who lives here, not somebody that is fine with it, point number one. But number two, to the people that are, that this law covers, or the positions that this law covers, I would really like to see those enumerated in the law. And you said there are three. I also thought of the deputy highway superintendent, would that not also be covered?
I don't think so.
Okay. But I think to consider. If you could talk to Guy Crowe or whatever, and that might be postponed, quote, I don't know how that all works, but I really think that it would be helpful all the way around if the positions were explicitly enumerated. But the main point I want to make is that New York State law provides for public hearings prior to the enactment of local laws. And somehow I think that the spirit of that is being rubbed around a little bit. In recent times, we have had these public hearings scheduled on the same evening that the law is going to be enacted or it needs to be voted upon for enactment by the town board. And I just wonder, I mean, if, if the notion is these listening sessions, you don't have to respond, but the idea being that you listen to what people say and you give it some due deliberation. How much time do you have to do deliberation amongst yourselves? Sometimes it's a matter of just privately going home and thinking about stuff before you can come back to a board meeting. But how much time between a public hearing at 20 after six and at 20 after eight, you vote on the law with all the other business that happens in between? I don't like to use the word mockery, but it's what comes to my mind. I mean, it just seems to, if you're going through the motions of adhering to the law, I don't question that you are, but I think that the spirit is getting lost somewhere. And I think that that's happening more and more as I see the timing of these hearings and votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Our response, bro.
So Peter, one of my points. I don't think that having a public hearing on the same night that you're voting on acting the law is right. I just don't think. Probably legal, but it's legal and what's right are normally two different things. Code enforcement. I seen it posted, you can already tell it. See it posted this time. I'm a code enforcement officer, but I do, I thought about it. Nah, I don't think I want to work this time here. There's too much selected enforcement. I can drive around, there's multiple places I have seen and there's no placard, you know, it's a state law, a placard must be posted. You drive down Brooklyn, you'll see three spots, just on Brooklyn, and you still have an illegal structure with no permit.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this Zoom call? John, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
So I can only speak on the code right now and then at 6:30, you're going to talk about the other issue.
That's, yeah, that's a separate.
So I'm stuck here for.
You're not stuck.
So I just want to voice my opposition. I, I'm still a little confused why our last code officer wasn't able to, this position was never clear to me why he was let go.
That's not the point of this meeting. So.
Okay, so, so we're gonna expand our reach to, because we can't get anybody to, to apply for this job that's in the county, but surrounding towns. That's crazy. I, I don't agree with it and I just want to voice mine and my family's opposition to it.
Is anyone else signed up?
There's a hand up, Mark.
Oh, hand up, it's, it's Hannah Wiley. Yeah, Hannah, go ahead. Can you unmute her, Jesse?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, um, give me just a second, sorry. I just wanted to kind of second what my husband's saying. I think for the outreach for code enforcement is, it's unsettling to me. I, you know, part of me wonders like, how hard is it going to be? Or, or are we going to get the same, you know, quality of work out of, of, you know, a code enforcement officer or really any position in the town if they don't live here? Um, I've been working in town here all day and I still can't even make it to a meeting with everything going on. I just wonder like, what, what would it, I just don't like it. But I see it unfitting to hire outside of the town. I don't think it's fair to the people that do live here. I do like to know, I like, I like knowing that our town officials live here. That's it for this.
Okay, thank you. Great.
Anybody else signed up?
John, did you want to speak?
You signed up?
He's not signed up.
There's no.
Oh, I didn't have much for this one, but some things I heard I really liked. I think Pete was spot on. Why are we holding these hearings minutes before you vote? You guys don't have time to go think about it, that's not right. And I would think that historically that's probably not been the law. Also, like what Pete said. I really think that this law, this was part of my confusion coming in, if it's only three positions, list them in it. Don't, don't leave it open to other stuff showing up in there that scares the shit out of everybody. List them, if it's only three, big deal, list them. Cindy had a great comment and I think there's a lot of people that feel this way when you talk about this stuff outside of this room. It feels like we're cherry picking and looking for someone that's going to mimic agendas within the town board and that's not right. And whether that's the case or not, that's what people think. Just put it up there. We've had a hard time keeping a code person in this town. We've gone through three in a short amount of time, I think three. Is the problem really that we don't have a good code person or is it the problem that it's, there's a lot of friction in that office and they don't like being there and things aren't going well in the office? And maybe we need to look internally as to why we can't get a code person in there to stay and why the local people who know what's going on in the office aren't applying. That's my belief. And I think that the town board as a whole needs to take a look at that without, just stretching out farther to grab somebody that doesn't know what's going on in this town and bring them in. So my, my belief is this is not right, not now, and for sure, list those positions on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one other quick question. Do you have somebody in mind already? I mean, do you have somebody that?
We do, so.
Okay, is it so you can share it or we?
I will be later in, in the business meeting. So I just want to clarify that Kevin McMahon, who I think many of you knew was a, a resident of Homer in Cortland County. He served us quite happily for many years and was an amazing, great asset. And we were just not aware of this nuance in town law until after he left the positions. And so that became, that was brought to our attention during Brooke Beanhouse's tenure. He lived spitting distance of Caroline on Banks Road. And so we amended the local law then and there were a lot of deliberations about the breadth that we would choose to, to widen. And so we, and I, I think some of you here were involved in those discussions and there were considerations of opening it up much more widely than even we're considering today. So I just, you know, that's important background.
One town?
Pardon me?
Both of them were one town out?
Well, Homer's in Cortland County. Homer.
I thought it was a journey.
And, and also unbeknownst to, or we were unaware that the deputy clerk, Chris Wilber, who's still serves us and served us for many years, was a resident of Dryden. So, you know, honestly, we're just, you know. Making sure we're compliant with, with New York State town law and, and figuring out something that works for Caroline. So, but thank you all for your comments and we'll be considering those during our deliberations. We are not required to vote on the local laws tonight, but we may. So. Okay, is it 6:30 yet? Yes. Yep. 6:30, so, great. So that closes the public hearing on the local law to expand residency allowance for appointed public officers. And now I will open the public hearing on the local law. Extending the land use moratorium that we've had in place. And the proposal in that extension is for another year to allow the zoning work to, to run its course. So with that, I open the, that public hearing and have a list here. Again, anyone wishing to speak from Zoom land, raise your round Zoom hand and we'll, we'll call on you as well. So the first name I have here is Bruce Murray.
I'm going off the handout that you handed out at the last meeting because I'm moving under the findings and support as they do, but had one, 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 one all the way down through. The old one has one, four on it. First off, I don't agree with you being able to extend moratorium for a time. I think it's actually a good idea. But as I read through this, I gotta admit Catherine's report, she had the zoning commission on egg. I read over it, but not real thoroughly and I read it over again pretty thoroughly this time. There's a lot of good points in there that should be brought up. In your findings and support from your section four with ID, it says change in agriculture and landscape, you had an indirect, on page 38, and comprehensive plan. There's a variety of agricultural protection tools that have been identified in the comprehensive plan. And as far as any of those things discussed, I sent an email to the zoning commission thinking that we should look this over a little bit more thoroughly. And try to relate with the ad committee and get some of this stuff enacted before we do come up with a law. Just because that's very important to what we're really trying to do is protect the egg glass. And the other thing is, looking back on a lot of my older notes, I find out the town reference table to laws that already exist on the books. Adult uses law, 1999, way outdated, needs to be rewritten. I think the town board should be looking at that junk law. Wrote in, what was it, 1986. I believe that law should be rewritten and redone. I think the town board should be spending some time on the laws that already exist as far as rewriting them or renewing them and also enforcing a lot of them that have never been enforced.
Thank you, Bruce. Zoom, is it Ellen? And you'll have to unmute her. Ellen Harrison.
Okay. Hi, thank you for doing this. I am speaking in favor of the moratorium extension. The zoning commission has been doing a remarkable job, meeting what, twice a month for a long time. They are working at this in a very responsible, thoughtful manner. And they have had many opportunities for public input, which they didn't have to do, but they did because they want to hear what people think. And they are now in the process of making some revisions to the initial draft, reflecting some of those comments, some of which I agree with, some of which I don't, but I respect them for taking the time to do that, doing it carefully. So they need to have the time to complete this in the same thoughtful way they've been working. And then it needs to go, of course, to the town board where there will be further deliberations, public hearing, and the town board will need time to make that consideration and then adopt or not, or modify the zoning proposal. The, I am on the town's review board and I have to say that I, I cannot serve on the review board until this process is complete because simply will not know how to behave. One of the criteria that we're supposed to be using for dealing with an application is, among other things, its consistency with the comprehensive plan. Without zoning, I don't believe we can do that. I don't know how to do that. So I, as a person currently on the review board, as I say, if we don't have a moratorium and we start to see proposals, I think my only alternative will be to resign because I could not do that job according to the law. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. I'm sorry, I really can't read the next name. It's whoever signed up after Bruce Murray with a kind of a, it looks like Zorro scribble or something like that.
Maybe ends with a A? Does it end with an A maybe?
Anyone to cut that, any confessions? Second one down.
Well, somebody in this room.
Someone will let me, someone will let me know if they did.
My name on the list. I'm sorry. I'll put you on, John. It's not Robert, it's not Peter, and it is not Kathy. Anyone else want to speak? Maybe this is an error.
You gotta put me on the list too.
The next speaker is Kathy Mix. The next speaker is Kathy Mix.
Thank you. So, um, looking through this, I had my editor's eyes on. So in section seven, paragraph VII, at the bottom of page ten, the second sentence from the bottom. It ends with mentioning planning legal Aang. I don't know what Aang is. I'm assuming that it's supposed to be Aang.
What's the Roman numeral?
VII.
It's supposed to be Aang. And, and.
That's my, that was my deduction, but I wanted to make sure. Yeah, so there is proof, people are reading these. This, I've had reservations about this moratorium from the get-go and it seems that it's a preview of what zoning will be. There's a lot of land zoning or other land use regulations going into place. Seems like it's putting carp before horse. I think we really need to have the law, the draft and the laws out there so we know what's going on before we can, you know, put a moratorium in place to, to prevent people from doing stuff. I think you're preventing. You know, it's, it's pre-zone prevention of, of expansion of the test. And I feel it's a little too much work and I have thought that from the get-go.
I guess I'll go to Zoom. I, I see Hannah Wiley's name up, or hand up, sorry. Yep, Hannah.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, yeah, so I think this moratorium is like just ridiculous to begin with. But what really concerns me is like whose lives are we really messing with here by even having it? We don't know and we don't have zoning yet. So I, I just, I, I, I oppose it. I don't like it. I don't think it, I don't think it should be happening and I think we should let people get on with their lives.
Okay, thank you, Hannah.
Yep.
Pete Hoyt, Peter Hoyt.
I agree with the folks that said that this law is unnecessary and pretty insulting. It's all elaborated to why I think it's all filled with blanks. Also, for record, I want to state my same objection to the timing of the hearing and the local law act. But I expressed for the other one, I don't know if that's safe for me to repeat the whole thing, but I, for the record, I object to have here and get the schedule and that for obviously. And I have not done due diligence and compared the two local laws. I would appreciate it if the supervisor would outline any significant differences between the two. So he could chew on it, but I don't have the right to ask that. I think that's it. I mean, this is. Anything else I say is just Pete Hoyt running his mouth again, you know? I think I've kind of worn out my welcome on some of that. But I, I share the view with everybody that's expressed here, at least everybody in the room. This thing should be turned off. Kathy's point about the carpet for the horses, I think, really right. And I think that bears some logical analysis. I think you're something to do with that.
Thank you, Pete. Robert Swansboro.
Okay, moratorium. What are we trying to stop with this commercial moratorium? Trying to stop border water from building a place out here? Trying to stop rendering plant from building a place out here? Trying to stop places that need sprinklers. And we've got codes, the state of New York, need to be enforced. We can stop ninety percent of what you guys want to stop. Because you have limitations on occupancies without sprinklers. We don't have public sewer and water out here. This moratorium is just, in my opinion, stupid. And there's no need for it to extend any farther than it already has. And to the point of the review board, when you review something, you go by the code of the day. It doesn't matter what's going to be here tomorrow. Go with what's the law today, not tomorrow.
Thank you, Robert. John Ward. Your.
I agree with Pete. Hearing and voting same day, yada, yada. Robert Swansboro, excellent point about, as far as your point that I'll make, July today dictates that. Next time I want to read a copy of a letter that my understanding came to the town board very recently, date of July fifth. I believe it went to all of you, but at least Mark. Dear Supervisor Whitmer and members of the town board, please be advised that the undersigned represents a group of concerned citizens, residents, property owners, and business owners in the town of Caroline who are generally concerned with the town's proposal to enact a new comprehensive and restrictive zoning law. We are also troubled by the ongoing and indefinite moratorium on residential and commercial development within the town. I believe it's mainly commercial. As you are aware, over approximately the past two years, the town board has enacted three separate land use moratoria. Local law number one dash twenty twenty, local law number three dash twenty twenty, and local law four dash twenty twenty one. Collectively, these moratoria have stifled business development and growth in the town and similarly impacted residential development as well. Resulting in numerous lost opportunities for businesses and families that may never appear again. The purported reasoning for these moratoria is the town's work on the preparation of a new comprehensive plan and the drafting of a zoning law for the first time in the town of Caroline. Despite being afforded many years to accomplish these tasks, the town is far from completing the zoning law and is facing overwhelming opposition, overwhelming opposition that's been throughout to the proposition of zoning in the first instance. With the most recent moratorium extension nearing its expiration on or around August first, twenty twenty two, it appears that the town board is considering yet another unwanted extension. The enactment of yet another extension will effectively prevent any land use development for a period of two and a half to three years in the town, all, all for a zoning scheme that may never be enacted. Further pursuit of a moratorium represents a reckless economic policy. Is con, is contrary to sound land use planning and is a blatant violation of law. Critically, the use of a moratorium is supposed to be rare and only for a limited duration. It is well-settled law in New York State that the excessive use and unreasonable duration of land use moratoria is unconstitutional. See Mitchell versus Cap, yada, yada. While six months to one year stopgap zoning measures designed to maintain the status quo may be permissible, a moratorium which is repeatedly extended for years on that cannot be countenanced and represents a flagrant unconstitutional violation of property rights, notwithstanding any asserted justifications for the delay in acting the new zoning law. See Lakeview Apartments of Hunnam Lake Incorporated versus Town of Stanford. Simply stated, there is no legal basis or authority for the town board to enact yet another moratorium on development in the town. Please be advised that if the town board pursues the new land use moratorium for an extension of the same, the town will be subject to further legal action up to and including commencement of litigation to overturn and nullify the legislation. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, John Wengley, Castello, Cooney, and Fur. So my thoughts personally are, this moratorium was put in place for one reason. And you all say it's not because of the Dollar General, but it was because of the Dollar General. That's what happened. And what is wrong with the Dollar General? I, I get it that some of us don't like it, other people don't like it. You've got a businesses no bigger than the other businesses under seventy nine. It's got a different sign alphabet. It's got a flashy yellow sign, that's it. And who did we hurt by eliminating that? Did we hurt the people that live under seventy nine that don't want to see it? No, help them. Who we hurt was the people who needed low income groceries and a place where they didn't have to spend an extra five dollars to drive downtown and back every time they need something. That's who we hurt. Get rid of the moratorium.
Thank you, John. I did note the letter in my supervisor's report that I'll be talking about in the business meeting. And I do want to, I will take a moment just. Pete was asking about if I could describe what, what changes we made to this moratorium law that make it different from the previous one. So it's largely the same, but we, we made it clear that it was, would apply only to development projects subject to site plan or subdivision review. So these would be, you know, large development projects. And we also added a paragraph that made it clear that home businesses are exempted. So farm-based businesses would not be affected, home businesses would not be affected. So those are the, the clarifications we made to this. So it's, it's intended. You know, despite words to the contrary, it is intended as a to put a hold on development while the town is taking a serious look at its first ever zoning regulations. And then I'll just, I'm not going to go on about it, but if you do want to read about this, and probably most of you have seen it, but there is a New York State Department of State document on land use moratoria. That's very informative and helpful and explains the particulars on. And so you can look at the particular cases that have been overturned where developed, where municipalities have not proceeded to enact or to work on the goals that they had set for enacting the more, for, for setting the moratorium. So I'll just, that's, you can Google it right up, so.
Mark, is there a link to that on the town website?
I, I don't think I have a link to it, but you can just Google New York State Department of State land use moratorium. It's like the first one that'll pop up. Yes, question? Or comment? Did you wish to speak?
I would just like to know why the town board wants to keep the town of Caroline in a darky. Is it just to make things difficult for seniors and limited income people? Are they just control freaks or what? I'd like to know.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Well.
Any, any hands up? So, great. All right. No, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm sorry, you're unhappy, so. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, okay.
I oppose the, the extension of the moratorium and my family does.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Can I actually speak as well?
Oh, yeah. No, I, I didn't know you were wishing to speak.
Pete, I emailed you the.
So what, what I'm going to both request and suggest, which I've done before, is transparency, right? I feel like the justification that I've heard for this multiple times is that it is required for the zoning commission to finish their work, which I see as flawed logic, frankly. It's like, right, it is obviously not required for the zoning commission to finish their work. If we are going to enact a moratorium for the fourth time, there must be something that we are trying to prevent or one would, one would logically deduce that. So I, I would just like to request transparency. Can you elaborate on, on what the justification is?
Yeah, what's going to change in the next year that hasn't changed in a hundred and ninety?
Thank you. This, the intent of the public hearing is to take public comment that we will discuss in the meeting. I just gave my honest justification for moratoria. And it's actually described quite clearly in the Department of State document. And I mean, you can choose not to believe that that's genuine, it is genuine. So that's, that's all I can say.
I didn't, I didn't mean to suggest that it's disingenuous. It just seems like flawed logic to me. It's like, obviously, it is not requisite for the zoning commission to finish a zone draft.
Okay, so then, understood. I, the, it doesn't, it's not required for that purpose. But it is required if you're concerned about what they call a rush to the gates. While you're, you're formulating new land use regulations in the town. A land use moratorium is intended to put a hold on things while the town is getting that in place. So that's the rationale. Yeah, okay. Okay, so any other comments or? Yeah. So with that, I will close the public hearing on the local law to extend the moratorium. We will be discussing it in the business meeting and I do thank you all for coming and sharing your thoughts. So, great, and so I think it's a bit before seven, we'll wait five minutes or so before opening. I had one like that and then the one that I put out, I simplified it. I thought it was just simpler to make it.
Whether civil servant jobs fall and there's like it's code, it's posted in the civil service, right?
Well, it's, it's, it's subject to civil service hiring requirements and all of that, but it's, it's an informative public officer of the county.
Okay, just wanted to clarify because that was, I was.
Somebody was asking about that, yeah. Oh, yes, okay, okay, yeah.
I mean, you know all of my.
Yeah, so, sorry to. But she has been one for a clerk in the county.
Yeah. But what is, what is Valdez?
So Valdez is the bookkeeper and I don't, she qualifies as a, she's, she's not an appointed, she's not a public officer. She's not a speaker. No, she's, she is appointed by me, so she's appointed by me.
So she, like the. So she, like, this is where it's.
Yeah. So maybe that's worth clarifying. Clean in the circle. But I wanted, yeah.
Person who asked me why this year has spoken, I did not reiterate it again, so.
And what?
And did not reiterate that concern again, so it might have been put to rest.
The bookkeeper thing, the word.
And civil servant question.
Oh, yeah, that one, I, yeah, that one.
But I think clarify, I mean, even for me, like, I tried to look up like, what is a pointed public official in New York State? And I, like, I don't want the answer.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna pull up Kai's email now, but see how time do we have? It's almost time to go, right? Oh, five minutes.
Yeah, it's a big tree, it's like this big round. It made a bell in the driveway.
Also, is that her?
Yeah. Yeah, I just got a phone call in the driveway. No, it's not my driveway, it's my neighbor's driveway.
It's still shared.
Huh?
It's still shared.
Yeah, it's on their property. They want, they, I mean, it's on their.
When you said that, and it just gave you, just to stop, it didn't go anywhere. But then I tried to dig up a little part later, where it's.
Really? So these aren't nice people.
I said I wanted.
I remember the everything that we all pitched in.
Yeah, I don't know, it was weird.
And it's not really my website, we use the square point scale system, which happens. And it's, it's a, it's, yeah, and so it's a, it's a website through their interface. So it's a fair website. And I just built my own space here. Well, it's happened, like, I remember, but it's not rare, but it's happened, it didn't happen, it was already had a service.
That was so. A point, yeah. Oh, wow. Yeah, so I don't, I think, I think we should just name those positions that I named, and that'll be happy.
But then what happens?
But, I mean, so for the planning board, I mean, I actually agree, planning board.
Almost the way was.
Right. Right, well, I think last time, last time we think, we decided, just like, well, let's just leave it by, I mean, somebody else is running the job. Well, I mean, that defiance.
Yeah, I never.
Great, so that means that we can't have our, we don't want the planning board to be, we want the planning board to be.
Right.
Which we do.
Right.
Then we can't have a law talk about appointed public officials.
Right, right.
Just just name the deputy clerk, and then off the circle, and the highway clerk. And then it's a discretion, it's a point, and Sir Bob would be the.
Yeah, I think all that was like.
It is, I thought I, I thought I understood it better.
They do, well, they went for, we had, we got them.
Yeah.
Because they're contractors, yeah.
Yeah. That's a wonder. So many tragedies.
Simple list come here.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I mean, it's, I feel like, maybe we have to like.
They were instead like door side door, two yard.
Good luck. Oh, yeah.
Like, so basically, like, we kept looking.
We had all this, I think, we should have hours everywhere to move it to set all that. And Mark sent me a request and a format that I can't open. Jesse. And did. Some sort of, I don't know, I think.
I see, well, yeah, so it's. I've been, I've been, I've been, I've been.
Oh, I have not received a little truck.
No, I didn't give you that. I heard lovely, I see nothing.
You're getting stage.
We have the Republican, we have the Republican here, they accept, you know, ten pointers, great, does it then expire or something?
Yeah, but I feel like that would be.
Oh, by the way, you thought it.
What's that?
At the beginning of.
I lost my agenda.
I've lost you.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, welcome, everybody.
Yeah.
Are we recording? Welcome, everybody, to July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Caroline County Board Business Meeting, and I will open the business meeting with a salute to the flag, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. So I'll open the meeting with opportunity for privilege of the floor, and the board will be working to project tonight to make themselves very audible, so. I'll have to do better, Pete, I'll have to do a little better, okay. Okay, I'm told to switch the first two names, so R.C. Crick is second, who's first? You're first.
Thank you. Our town. This place we all love finds itself at critical and crucial crossroads. The zoning initiative represents the largest change to the town of Caroline since its founding. To me, as a multi-generational landowner, it feels as if you want to rip open my chest and take a piece of my heart and along with it, some of my soul. I have been told that what I say at these meetings is hurtful. It needs to be understood that many, many of us feel we're in the fight of our lives for our legacy and our livelihoods. Political discourse is very seldom a feel-good event. I am an alcoholic. I have forty years of sobriety. These forty years include being honest with myself and with others. These forty years also include working the land and woods where others in my family have worked since eighteen sixty-four. I am alive today because of this land. I have gotten my health back on this land, and I have bled on this land. I do not want to be told what I can and cannot do on this land. I'm sure others here feel the same way about their land. Mark, the town website states, as your town supervisor, it's important for me to know that you have easy access to your local government. If your questions are answered and that you have avenues to communicate the issues which are important to you, please call, email, or drop by the town hall. I have something else for the individuals of the town board and the town board collectively. I have been answered by two members of the town board, Catherine and Cal. Thank you both. Others have not responded. I'm sure perhaps others listening and on Zoom may have had similar experiences. Mark, you have been asked numerous times, what will it take for you to truly listen, take notice, and take action on what we are saying about the zoning initiative? We never get a real answer from you. If nothing is going to convince you, tell us. More people than voted in the last election for supervisor and board members have expressed they want to slow down or stop to zoning in Caroline at the present time. Doesn't that mean anything to you? This is not the time for zoning in our town. We continually hear about how zoning is going to make Caroline a better place for future generations. How about us? How about us? If current situations in the town are not addressed, there may not be future generations. No ambulance, no lighting, no internet, no signage, and town barns that have dangerous conditions screaming for attention. Instead of expediting these issues, the board spends tens of thousands of our tax dollars to a consultant from downstate. As has been mentioned, great communities are rarely created by consultants. But I get it. Sadly, I get it. It is very natural for boards and committees to surround themselves with people possessing similar characteristics. Why? It's easier. Sure, there may be one or two that may not always agree, and these people's comments are often discounted. And at the end of the day, these people may not comment at all and just go with the flow. It leads to group think. Group think is the tendency for individuals to agree with each other in a group setting, usually in order to conform. usually in order to conform and keep harmony. This can contribute to inefficient decision-making as ideas and thoughts go unchallenged in favor of cohesion. In other words, individuals in the group won't disagree because they fear social isolation. There are many examples of group think. Is it a factor within our town committees and boards? Maybe, maybe not. But for sure, there are similar psychographic and demographic characteristics within a majority of the board, the committees, and the four zoning people.
R.C., you're at six minutes.
I'm sorry?
You're at six minutes.
Excuse me for a moment. I will not sit down. I will not sit down. If after you hear what I have to say, the reasons I will not sit down and still want me not to continue, I expect to be escorted out of this meeting. I'm a seventy-five-year-old, fifth-generation landlord. Landowner, excuse me. I have the floor. Please.
You are disrespecting our process. I'm sorry.
Kick me out?
I will not do that. I ask you to respect our process.
I will not sit down.
Okay.
And I'm sorry.
That's your choice. Go ahead.
I am not here only representing myself and my views. I am here representing the people of this town who hold similar views and may not be comfortable speaking in front of a group. I am representing those without internet and cellphone capability. I represent Ed Monroe and others on Buffalo Hill and rural roads that are poverty-stricken. I represent the people who used to come to meetings and don't come anymore because they get so angry. The Bill cases, the Tavalli, the Joe Rivera's. I represent the seventy-nine-year-old man with cancer who drove his John Deere tractor to the town-owned memorial on White Church Road that honors veterans of Caroline who died fighting for us and mowed it because you didn't. It took him three times with his mower to make it presentable. These are the people I speak for. It is not only me. Perhaps we should remember what William Euer Gladstone said. Show me the manner in which a nation or community cares for its dead, and I will measure with mathematical exactness the tender mercies of its purple people, their respect for the laws of the land, and their loyalty to high ideals. Okay. Do you want to take a sidebar to see if you want to let me continue? Do you want to escort me out, or will you let me continue with what I would say?
I would ask you to step down. You can make your own choice.
I will not step down?
Well, okay, that's your choice.
I'll go back to where I was. But for sure, there are similar psychographic and demographic characteristics within a majority of the board, the committees, and the four zoning people. An elite enclave, as described by Megan Burke. Psychographics include moral, ethical, and political values, and inherent attitudes, biases, and prejudices. Demographics include age, race, gender, marital status, income, education, and employment. The pro-zoning psychographic and demographic segment is narrow. The people against zoning come from a true socioeconomic cross-section of the town of Caroline and a wider psychographic and demographic segmentation. Co-zoning against them. Do we want a less populous, narrower segment of the town of Caroline, determining the future of the more populous segment? I don't. Do you? I ask everyone here, should three people who own a total of fifty-three acres, out of thirty-five thousand five hundred, seven hundred and fifty acres, have the power to be the ones to make zoning law of the land? These three people own a little over a thousandth of a percent of the land in Carroll. If they own one percent, they would own a total of three hundred and fifty-seven point five acres. It all makes little sense to me. You have such a huge opportunity before you. You have the opportunity to stop this initiative, disband the commission, and get on the work with the work that is trying to get done. Think of the publicity possible. Think of regaining the respect and credibility of a majority of the town citizenry. Hasn't this gone on long enough? We are in a recession. Now is not the time. If you continue this initiative, nothing is going to get easier for anyone. And if you pass zoning, thinking that those of us who are opposed to zoning are going to fade into the woodwork. Think again. Thank you very much for letting me talk.
I believe that you should take your heart. I totally agree that having your involvement issue at the same day is not the way governments should run. However, one of the reasons I'm under the people, one of the reasons I'm under the government commission, and one of the reasons I've been even working with the government is me, because I sat back and watched my local government run just a little bit on the shit he said. Things have been done, things have been set, untrue, things like that. It upsets me immensely, watching the way procedures supposed to happen and see it not happen the way it's supposed to happen. Those things upset me. That's how come I've gotten involved and done what I've done. And it's happened right from placing board members to placing people on different committees to statements that have been made during meetings. And like I said, I'm a right-orang type person, and that's why I'm here. And I just wish my board would put forth as much effort to run things properly as they do to push this thing through. That's it.
Thank you, Bruce. Sally Partridge left, right? Kathy Mix.
Hello, everybody. Stick your hand to me tonight. Anyway.
Try us.
Um, I want to go on public record first to say I think I've been respectful and thoughtful and the things that I could have brought forward to the board. Most recently was a letter that I wrote to Dean after the last listening session that we had about the zoning commission and what they were put forward. And I cited information in that that I thought was credible and useful. And I copied the word and I put it on public record here with the town clerk. And the reason why I did that is because I got no response from Dean. The only person I got response from, sitting right there, said thank you to the thoughtful information. I didn't get an acknowledgement from Dean at all, saying, hey, you know, thanks for the input. You know, we'll take this into consideration, which I think was warranted. I took a lot of time and energy into that, and I'm very passionate about keeping the hamlet, if you use a town hamlet, of Caroline, which is where the town started, in as a hamlet. I think it's important. That's where our roots are. And that's where it all began, people. Anyway, thank you for that. To go back with Pete and what Pete said about voting on laws after coming to public hearing, I want to emphasize that it really doesn't give people, the chance who are zooming, to be able to kind of think about what is being said by the other community members, and they may actually have something that they want to share after viewing it. Because not everybody has the accessibility to have a real-time zooming. I know where I am. I have to go to work in order to view this stuff because I don't have internet at my house. So if people need a chance to really, the community and you should have a chance to really think about the laws that are being presented in the comments room. So thank you with that. Something that I thought about, about the moratorium or not the moratorium, the out-of-the-area, thinking about people from out of the area and going back to my EMS and fire routes. When you're thinking about appointing somebody from out of the town, if you have a fire, this is a, the coenforcement officer should be on the scene and being able to make recommendations as to whether or not the building is safe or not through the engine. So, and I think if you go outside the area, it may be prohibitive, especially in bad weather. On that note, one other point I want to bring up as we're talking about things in zoning. I think it's great that you put the act committee together, being a farmer. I think it's awesome. My husband sits on that thing, and I think it's great. But what are our other stakeholders in this town? I want you to think about that for the agenda meeting for tonight. What about small business? Do we have a committee that can put together information to give to the town about small business and what they might be proposing for the town? And, you know, you're putting a moratorium in place that's preventing people from putting businesses in. I think it would behoove the town to think about that and maybe think about the other stakeholders in the town. And I hope that you don't vote on laws tonight, that you give people a chance to mow it over and to reiterate the New York State town law that you're supposed to be listening to us and acting for us as a whole. And the decisions that you make affect everybody in the town, not just a select few. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
So it's such a great idea about the small business situation. I just want to point out that the genesis of the ad committee was actually a term before, just like you just gave when some other people came to speak with the board about their ad issues. So that's exactly how this.
How it works.
How it works. So it's great, and I'm fully supportive.
Let's see. Peter Hoyt.
I'm really not going to be contentious tonight. I don't know why, but it don't feel like it. I fully support the resolution requesting the act, say, come on the act committee with Andrew. And on the supervisory report, thank you for publishing this, making it available to read. I got some comments I want to make on what's in here. May I?
I guess so. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, that was a rhetorical question.
Well, I haven't presented it yet, but go ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the thing, and that comes to the more general thing I want to say. A month or two ago, I recommended perhaps having some kind of approval to the floor at the end of the meeting.
I know.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, okay, I'm reminding you, it would certainly be a lot less time consuming speculative for a citizen to make a comment after he has heard the supervisory report and a deliberations following it rather than in advance, since I don't have the privilege to speak out for the meeting. I'm taking my shot now, and thank you for providing me with this at. I know I've got a couple of minutes here. Yeah, here is, here is one. The second bullet point under the supervisory notes. Do I read that, that there is attempting to get some outside funding to pay for a consultant on zoning, or am I?
Yes.
That is it. And if I understand fly car, I think I've talked to Kathy about this a long time ago. Sounds like a good idea to me.
I reported on it previously, so.
Okay. Yeah. I need to step in right direction, put these things out here, Mark. Again, urge for you to consider some sort of a curfew. There will be far fewer people who hang around for this meeting. So that might be someone instead of, consider it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Pete.
Oh, I want to add a couple things. Dean McPierce. Her comment is unacceptable, no matter how it was taken. She'll never came out of someone in her stature. The town board really needs to remove her from her position. That's my opinion on that one. And now we got the, running to the gates to take and apply for permits and everything else, so. Quite extensive moratorium, take. So just so we know, we're running for the gates. Twenty-twenty-one, town collected fifteen thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy cents of dollar fees. We're running for the gates. Old officer, sadly, according to the state, thirty thousand one hundred seventy dollars and ninety-six cents for part-time. But we're running for the gates for development in town of Carolina. I don't get it. I really don't. Just don't get it. How, why do we need the moratorium? Why? Doesn't make sense. And we had our discussion. Can't talk amongst ourselves, dwell over what's going on in town board I'm speaking. And really take the comments that your constituents are putting out there. I don't think voting on this stuff tonight is right morally, right legally, right? Yes, morally right. Just, yes, I don't have anything besides that.
Thank you. Paul Morse.
More zoning stuff for me to get. I guess I'm just tired of being here talking about this stuff, and I think the whole town's tired of it. You know, it's mentioned that there's so many things that this town could work on that would bring a sense of community or improve morale. sense of community or improve morale. And we are pushing ahead with the thing that is actually making people hate each other in this town. And it's happening here, and there's disdain from some of you when we speak about it, and you can see it in your faces. And some of you listen attentively. The other thing I wanted to mention tonight is there's a post, I'm not sure exactly where it was. Katie Sims. Progressive candidate for mayor of Ithaca has recently posted something that might find interesting. Development, zoning in Ithaca and across the country is intended to be exclusionary. When we limit the amount of housing that can be built, only the richest can afford a place to live. Seems like we've heard this before. We need to strike single-family zoning and minimum parking requirements from our zoning codes to increase available housing, lower prices, and allow our city to grow alongside sustainable transportation. A lot of this is city-related. Moderates have used the housing crisis in Ithaca as an excuse to approve tax breaks for luxury apartment developments, which is undermining our municipal budget at the expense of working-class people. This has to happen. But the main gist of the sucker right in the beginning. Zoning across the country is intended to be exclusionary. When we limit the amount of housing that can be built, only the richest can afford a place to live. We've said it over and over here. It doesn't matter what your intent is. When we start putting restrictions on things and we increase the amount of things, hoops that you have to jump through and different permits and special regulations. It adds costs, it adds taxes, and it excludes the less privileged period. That's what zoning does. Thank you.
ECM. Initials, E C M.
That might have been a
Probably was. Okay. Probably was. Yep, thank you. All right. Okay. Thank you for all for speaking to us and I am available at the town hall if you ever want to talk. Perfectly happy to talk, so. Any other comments before we leave, before we leave the floor? All right. So move on to the meeting. Do we have?
I contacted them and called them, and they've got no response.
Oh, okay, so.
So they have an email and they have a voicemail.
Okay.
This is the Cornell designs.
Yes.
So I wouldn't say I'm surprised.
It is July.
You contacted them initially, though, right?
Remember, we got an email that Jesse forwarded to me, and there was a, there was a contact information.
Okay.
And I called them last Thursday and sent them an email.
Okay, now, did they say what department they were in?
I don't remember. I just, there was an email address and a phone number.
I think Cornell design, I think it's a
I'll be happy to look into that.
Thank you.
But it's probably just because it's summer.
No, but they solicited us.
I know, I know.
They wanted some ideas. They solicited us and they have a deadline, so. Right.
I don't know if they want ideas for students.
Okay. So I guess we'll try to contact them and see what we can find out off that channel.
It's been a week and Timble.
Okay. Okay.
We'll get recorded.
Okay. Great. And then, so I'll move on to my supervisor's report. This has been referenced, so I did, we did receive the letter that was read by John tonight. And so I won't belabor that. He read it in its entirety. We received the two thirty-nine review by the county of the proposed moratorium extension, which is required. So that's they approved it and, and and added their comment that's posted on the website with tonight's agenda. And we received the twenty twenty-three budget proposals from the for the recreational partnership for youth programs from Karen Scott. And we replied to her individually. They had their meeting last night to vote on the budget. They proposed a three percent increase. One budget with a three percent increase, which would have cut three programs, summer music outings, climbing, and tight spot. To keep, to maintain current programs with increases in personnel expenses requiring an eight-point-eight percent increase. So that's, we supported that, and Karen reported that most of the rec partnership was in favor of that budget as well. Uh, my notes on broadband, I did talk to Behaveleen. He's going to provide us a proposal for build-out. He also called me and said there might be additional money, so I'll look on that. And then Teacock, the supervisors in Tompkins County, who are members of the Tompkins County Council of Governors, will be meeting with an engineering firm in late July to learn about the, our options and potential collaborations, I hope. So more later on that. The zoning planning, as somebody brought up, yeah, Pete. Actually, Ms. Dolsonberg pointed me to this and said it might be an opportunity for the town, so Velvet and I are working on submitting a consolidated funding application to support our planning work. So we'll see where that goes. I mean, that's due by the end of this month. Countywide shared services, we met, that's again a meeting of the supervisors that's convened by the county administrator. I mean, that was a program started under Governor Cuomo to encourage counties to investigate and implement shared services. And a notable shared service accomplishment in Tompkins County is the conference, the the health consortium that done was instrumental in, in building and is still involved with. So this year, there's not a requirement to submit a shared services plan. And so we decided that, given that a lot of the things we're considering require more research, that we would, would work on that and think, you know, develop a plan for next year. And we talked, well, at length about looking at, well, last year Martha Robertson could put in the budget a budget amount to support a study for potential shared services with code enforcement countywide. So ways, not, not simply, you know, countywide code enforcement, but ways that there might be opportunities for sharing services countywide. And the one we talked about was fire inspections, but there might be others as well. So that's going to be proceeding.
And addresses.
Pardon me?
And to addresses.
And addressing, yeah. So, yeah. And emergency service planning, the committee I'm working with at Teacock, we're still, we're continuing to work on that and looking at a countywide response would be what's often referred to as a flycar response, where you have, it's a non-transport vehicle with paramedics and EMTs that can provide immediate stabilization. And so there are a couple of counties that have recently done this. It's, it's been fairly successful and well-received. So I'm really happy that Michael Stately and Justin Band from the Partner Emergency Response are helping us with that and engaged with that, and so that's proceeding. Yeah, and I already mentioned the rec partnership budget, and then I'm continuing on this feasibility study possibility for district or community geothermal in the Hamlet of Speedsville. So getting information from residents and they're going to put a a grant in that would fund the feasibility study. So, and then that would evaluate, that would determine whether it's feasible for that hamlet. So that's ongoing. We'll see where that goes. So that's my report. Any questions?
So is that geothermal to heat the public buildings down in Speedsville or the residential building?
So the, the the community geothermal is it, it's a system. I don't know the engineering details. But the, it's, it's basically utility that's installed there. So the, the loop field would be established in the hamlet, and then anyone, any resident who wanted to could tap into it. And they would pay a fee or whatever to tap into it. So.
Kind of like Cornell heating.
Well, it's
Lake Source Cooling Heating.
But it, but it's geothermal. It's geothermal. It's not the same as Lake Source. It's geothermal heating and cooling.
It's silver.
Yeah, yeah. But, but the nice thing about it is it's, it's, the physics of it works the same as geothermal heating and cooling for your home. But if you do, if you have a community system, then that takes down, lowers the overhead cost for residents. It makes it more affordable. So.
And who takes out the bonded indebtedness?
I don't know any of those details yet. I'm learning. So we have a geothermal firm helping us with that also.
Is there any similarity in this concept of what Cornell's doing of the two boards?
No, it's not the same. My understanding of the bore is they're actually tapping deeper heat. So it's, it's really different. This, this community geothermal is shallow, like six feet deep, and it's just exchanging heat between the building and the earth. So, and it's dumping heat in the summertime and it's extracting heat in the wintertime. So, yeah. Those, the Cornell thing is, is hotter. It's deeper, hotter, and there's a lot more of it. So yeah, and you can, you can see the Derek out there near Cornell facilities if you drive by, so.
The GML two thirty-nine review by the county?
Yeah.
Any kind of comments you made or?
Their comment was that it would not be advisable to, they, you know, wouldn't extend beyond three years. So they, you know, they recognized that moratorium are time, time-sensitive. So that was their comment.
Is this public? Is this a public document or not?
Yeah, it's on the website. It's public. It's a public document.
So, I mean, it's not.
No.
It's not sensitive. No, it's, it's, it's on the website. Yeah, so Kathy.
I don't have a question. I just want to, want my expertise. I am not in the local fire department right now. I have a little knowledge, but I would like to share for your fire EMS studying for the, for the fly car.
Yeah.
I would be happy to serve on that. I have a pretty limited, okay?
Okay.
So, but please come in if you're interested.
Okay. That'd be great if you want to join us. So, cool.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want to be? Freddie?
Let's talk back.
Okay. Bruce?
The recreational partnership? Set a unanimous recommendation for maintenance? Well, that.
Question. I didn't get the question.
The set-based partnership? The town council unanimous recommended the chair and the maintenance of the effort budget?
Yeah. So we, the maintenance of effort budget maintained those three programs that would have been cut by the three percent budget. So we recommended keeping those programs and and adopting that, that budget. That was really, that was all the big, the decisions based on, in my opinion, that's from the information I had.
Good, thank you. And I have a word statement that makes sense. Task force, according to Ted's question, the task force did recommend a small business group created by the conditions of the town board. So that should be a bit down the road. Because it was suggested by that source.
Okay.
But I think there's a, there may be other stakeholders too, and so I want the town, the county council.
Great. Okay, thanks, everybody. Anything, any other questions?
And the amount of money the direct partnership, even at the five, eight percent, wasn't that, it wasn't that?
It wasn't a lot. They have a funding formula based on participation in each municipality, and ours is pretty low, so it was, it's about five hundred dollars difference for, for our, our contribution each year is about ten thousand dollars. So.
That five hundred dollars helps to save three billion or?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I was very comfortable with that.
It was like five hundred and forty-two bucks.
Yeah.
Bruce, the amount for the rec partnership was like five hundred and forty-two bucks. It wasn't huge. Yeah, I didn't know if you were kind of asking that.
Well, we're So, okay, system. Town clerk, sweet point. So, my Jesse.
Yeah, just really quickly, I just to let you know, I, I turned over my pitch report to Mark on July fifth. And I updated my foil request lecture today, and I have received eleven foil requests so far in July. And I went through and totaled each request that generally usually has more than one ask on it. And I have done a hundred and eighteen foil requests since January first.
Thank you for that report.
And I asked, how many foil requests do you generally do in a full year?
The first year, none. Last year was one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Highway Superintendent's report.
I got a small one. Give me another really copy of the resolution. Get Jessica together. You don't have a copy, and Jessica has a copy. Other than that, we're finishing up a few jobs. We should be done on the day of our here pretty quick. Finished up a job on the speed hill today. The Buffalo Road project, we're trying to work out some scheduling difficulties. So hopefully we'll have that kind of in the works here with the next speaker, so. And that's about it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Bob?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. You have a couple?
Did we get the, the bench for Dallas?
Yes, yeah. It's just set up in the bar.
Okay, I drove around.
What's right, it's middle, kind of.
Okay.
Is that your only question?
Yeah, I just, I just was, I didn't wasn't really sure. Been meaning to ask. Yes, it's in front of the gazebo, gazebo, before a concrete pad. So down there. And then everybody else is, you know, kind of landscaped around the tree that was put in. So it's, it's been a nice little spot.
Great, okay, thank you. See, Dan sent us a report. Very thorough report as usual. Pardon me?
We don't post, we post his reports. They do, right?
They'll be in the minutes. Jesse. Yeah, this report will be in the minutes.
So can he not come on a scheduled board meeting? That, we haven't seen him in months.
No, he's, he has some personal issues he's dealing with, so, yeah. I'll, I'll just go through and I'll, I'll just go through and summarize each paragraph in a few words. Um, he, he did, he did mention that um, Amy Hendricks, who some of you know, she was the deputy county administrator that was very um, front and center during a lot of the COVID pandemic. She led the month, the monthly COVID calls. And she was orchestrating all kinds of stuff. So uh, she took a job as a city administrator in Geneva. So she's gone and Bridget Nujan has just started. Um, and she actually chaired the shared services meeting last week that we had. So.
To that, she was great.
Yeah, yeah, she was great. She was great. So. Let's see, um, he mentions that the county's starting the budget deliberations, sales tax revenues are way up. And um, he said, that's a good thing. The redistricting is almost complete and he was advocating that any, if there were any changes that Caroline and Dan be, not be split up. And it looks like that's gonna be true. So that's good. Uh, TCAT, I'll just read the thing on TCAT because I think it's kind of cool. So TCAT just signed a one-year extension of a moratorium of understanding with Cornell for their both fairs.
There's a lot going on in the story.
Yeah, yeah. I, okay. Sorry about that. Um, so, um, anyway, there's a Cornell refused to pay any increase for their bus service. Um, even though the costs have gone up with the fuel prices and things. Um, and so um, Dan is disappointed with, with that. Yeah, yeah.
Like anyone who's a Cornell employee, I would say.
Advocate.
Yeah, like it's, yeah.
The other cool thing is that, not cool thing, but possible opportunity or something that I've always thought would be a tremendous thing is the, the buses have fare boxes and they're, they need to be replaced. And replacing them is very expensive, uh, be multi-million dollars to replace the fare boxes. And so what we, there has been discussion in the past about uh, developing a fare-free uh, bus system. So you just get on the bus and it would be fare-free. This does require a reconsideration of how the bus system is, is funded. Um, but I, I
Right, we are.
So I, I hope that will, will be a discussion. Um, and then Dan talked about the Community Recovery Fund that the county is, is developing from their ARCA funds. Um, they've hired a, a consultant to administer um, the six point six million dollar program. And um, so that's ongoing. They've developed a committee. Um, and they're going to be meeting August first. And so the, the challenge is going to be to find criteria um, for who's eligible for a grant. Um, and so he invited us council members and Republican Caroline to think about opportunities for Caroline. And how we, if we might think of, of ways to, to leverage that. And he preceded this by saying, you know, that um, giving away money that you have is, is actually can be a very tough job. So. So, yeah, um, that's, that's my summary of Dan's report. And um, it'll be in Jesse's minutes and reading it will be much better than what I gave. So. Yeah. About the, the grants in the county? Um, I don't have those. I don't Okay, I'll, I'll see if I can find out anything. I don't know if they have it that far along yet, but I think they're still developing it. Okay. What's that?
I'm thinking of the fly cars stuff.
Yeah, okay. Great. Yeah, I, yeah, that's a, that's a really good point. Um, okay. Any updates? I'm gonna move on um, to committee, any committee updates?
Since last week.
So.
I guess I could say the um, we did the Tompkins County Transportation Council Safe Roads for All. Uh, we had another meeting and things are progressing basically. Um, almost all the towns in Tompkins County are going to be co-applicants on those with the city of and um, everything has to get through by September fifteenth. That's when the deadline is. So that's short timing. Um, so anyway, we're working on it and should have a resolution um, in August. So so for us to
Great.
Say that we want to take part in. So, and I, I need to make sure we've got a federal number. I guess the ARCA funds came through that number. So.
Okay.
Anyway, that's it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything else?
We, we have our mag committee resolutions. Do you want that on a separate agenda or?
Yeah, I think we should put that as an agenda item in the meeting. That, that was, and I, I should have done that at the beginning. So we will be that is in addition to the agenda tonight that Catherine is offering. So, yeah. So with that, I would like to open um, yes, oh, yeah, okay, okay. Should I start anyway? I'm not sure. So, yeah, I'll, I'll offer a resolution to adopt the local law, amending residency requirement of appointed public officers. Seconded by Tim. Okay, discussion?
Um, as I, as I mentioned last week, when we were discussing this this law, which is in sync with county law and policy. And I think it makes a lot of sense just for extended when we do, when we do researches. And I think it makes a lot of sense. I, I wish we had done this the last time that we revised this law. And we made my collection today. I recommended that at the time. So I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just want to point out people brought up uh, the concern about having someone from outside of the town enforcing things in the town. And I, you know, most, it wouldn't be entirely um, what uh, the code officer does, but most of what they do is enforce the New York State Building Code. So, you know, that's that's uh, state, state code and it's covered by the state if, if the town doesn't cover it. So um, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with that.
And, and I would just add that if it has not been applied uniformly by past building put officers, it should be applied uniformly. So.
Yeah.
So I'm totally agree with that.
Are you going to propose the one that lists the positions or just the more open-ended pointed positions?
What are your thoughts?
I just want to know which one we're gonna go with.
Well, the one that's out there, um, that I put out there just said appointed public officers without specifying them. So what, what we need to consider is if we're comfortable with that. Other appointed, if we're comfortable with that discretion for other physicians in the town, but for any appointed public officer. For now.
And what if, what if we had two people apply for a position and felt they're kind of equally qualified, one was local, one was not. Are we gonna, what do they call it, admissions?
Call it a judgment, judgment call.
Yeah.
Well, they could, you could have a whole point system, right? But get into that. I mean, you could say five extra points for somebody who served in the military and five extra points if they live in the town of Caroline and
So either way, if they're volunteer for, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can.
When, you know, when we were interviewing candidates most recently, I think we took all of those items into consideration, especially in terms of prior experience of experience, understanding of various code enforcement.
Approach education and communication with the people.
Whole broad rule was something that we took into consideration for all the candidates. I mean, we could specifically enumerate it. I didn't find that was necessary personally in our discussions where we all ended, kind of ended up asking similar questions, like having similar understandings. I, I would just add regarding, you know, the officers. Um, I think it makes sense to leave it that way to give more flexibility down the line if there were other similar officer positions that developed. I don't foresee any immediately, but then you would have to stop and read the law to basically to accomplish the same thing. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this generic.
Well, I think, I think as long as the definition of what a public, you know, appointed public officer is, like, as long as consistent way, but I, I guess my worry about it is that it doesn't sound like it really is, even just in you know, trying to familiarize myself like just today, um, you know, there this New York State document for their continuing education course for, to talk about this. I just have like the PDF in front of me and evidently examples of appointed local officers include code enforcement as well as planning board members. Um, and that I, I'm not in favor, I don't think any of us are in favor, I must be correct on that. I would gather that we do not wish to have planning board members live outside of the town of Caroline. Like, that's not, I would not support it. So if there's a question, I guess, about the definition of what an appointed public officer is, then I think the, the role should be delineated. Um, you know, I confess that prior to like finding this, I don't think I would have thought it was a question of like, what's an appointed public officer? Like, it seems pretty simple, but it's like not simple. And so for that reason, just looking at this document, I'm like, I, like, I don't, I don't think we should leave it open if the intent is to have it be targeted. But I guess I wouldn't assume intent. So if the intent is to keep it targeted, this specific role that it needs to be targeted, if the intent is to keep it broad, it's keep it broad, but let's just be clear about what we're doing.
So, so with, with the planning board, should zoning for, yeah, but well, planning board, also. Do we have guidelines now, like when people want to be on the planning board? I'm, I'm new on the board, so I'm still.
Catherine, I'm, I'm wondering, our planning board is um, is, it isn't enforcement coded, you know, it's just uh,
Advisory.
Advisory.
But it is, it is a, it is an official planning board that was created by adopting a, a law, a local law.
Well, then maybe it, maybe it does make sense that just to delineate these three positions.
Yeah. But I was, I was thinking about, you know, so take, for instance, a planning board. Yeah. So uh, we certainly, yeah, would want planning board members to be you know, residents of the town.
Yeah.
And so it would, you know, but, and so that's something by, by having it be designated as appointed public officers.
Yeah.
It, we'd still, we could still do that. We still, it wouldn't, you know, it's, we, we, and, and so let's say there was an exception where, you know, there was somebody like Brooke was, you know, two blocks over the line and was a certified planner or something. You wouldn't have him on the planning board. You know, that, you know, I just think, I mean, I think that yeah, it wouldn't force you to, to expand residents. I think in most cases you insist on, on town residents. So I don't know. That's just because it is or it might be simpler to just have it be appointed.
I mean, I think when we're talking about like who's an employee, right? Like, what's the difference in a volunteer and a, a like an employee paid human? And that's very different. So to me, so planning board members are like volunteers of the community. They're not on the payroll of the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we're talking about like appointed, we're calling it appointed public officers. But to me, like, to help my brain think about this, I would just look at the payroll of the town and see like who's on it and say like, who's elected and who's appointed? And who needs to live where are their residency requirements? And like, I mean, that's how I think about it.
That would be the easiest. Yeah. Straightforward. Yeah.
There is a residency requirement to be on the, in that law, uh, to be on the planning on the planning board. You have to be a resident of the town of Caroline and over eighteen years old.
Good.
Except town board members are not eligible.
Right.
Right. I mean, I guess I would just move, if we are in agreement that that might be a good way to think about it in terms of like payroll, I might move to just have that discussion like about figuring that out and then reintroduce it. I don't have those in front of me right now. I'm looking at me like I'm crazy. I mean, I just Does that sound, I, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah. But we can't, I'm saying if we're gonna do, if we agree, I'm not saying we do, but if we agree that that would be useful, then we can't move forward with this right now because we need to look at that list.
I mean, I would feel quite comfortable moving forward now.
Okay, that's fine.
In the generic sense.
You would, with which?
Which office, as we have it written in the generic sense, understanding with, with our understanding as a word of what that means, how we understand that to me.
I, I understand that. I guess I'm understanding as like, we as a current board have an understanding in this moment.
Yeah.
Like, we're, we're, we're nothing like talent for any future board and those people are not in this room. So like, I just, I, I definitely, I respectfully strongly object to that as a rationale to be like, we're just gonna move forward because like we've all agreed, like, that is not how we do things.
Okay, can I, can I just recommend for practical reasons that we move forward tonight and then we can revisit this in terms of the delineations, the degrees of delineations.
You can, I almost know, but you can do that.
Yeah. I Yeah, I would be more inclined to name the positions that we're concerned about. Is that not?
Yeah, sure. I mean, great. So I'm saying we can do that now or for the sake of the agenda, we can do it another time. It's like, we are now how we're doing.
I'm happy to do that now personally.
Okay, if we, if we change that now, then we revisit it for everybody's sake, August, right, to to change it again to allow things to move forward, right?
We only have three positions that we're talking about currently, right?
Right.
So let's name them and then move forward.
So you gotta list the four in there.
So we can do public officers parenthesis. Public officer, the deputy highway superintendent and deputy town clerk, deputy town clerk. Is that right?
I'm saying if we have this much question about it.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that. Yeah, I think we should clarify this. And I mean, I hate to do that.
I don't, I don't have that much question about it. Like, if we put the four in
Okay.
that we're talking about, that things can move forward, if we find out that we want to change those at some point, we can, right? If, if there are other, you're saying there are other possibilities, it would, you would want to be including and included in this law. Is that correct?
I'm just saying that I want to understand the clarity and like, I said my keys and like, fine, like, of course.
No, I totally, I totally
I, I think that if we can, if we can name these four now, that's what's at issue. What is I, I think that if we can, if we can name these four now, that's what's at issue. What is at issue is expanding the boundaries, right? And there's, there's a real practical reason for us to expand the boundaries now. So if we can do that with enough clarity to move forward, I'm all in favor.
I know our place to speak is, but we just went from three to four positions and from superintendent.
We're, yeah, so I know, we're, we're just, I got that. We're discussing, I mean. So.
And many modify and then have another code here.
Yeah, that's a good question. What, how much modification triggered the new public hearing?
Understood, understood. Yeah, it's.
I'm just trying to help you.
I guess, yeah, I, I would say because of the situation at hand, I would like to move forward with this tonight. So putting off everything for a month, even if just putting in one title. I'm very forward. I mean, I think that I.
Yeah, I, I, I. I think we'd be well served to, to clarify this really well.
Is there a possibility that we will not have a codes officer then? Will have to do another search?
No, there's not.
Well, there is.
There is, there is.
If we wait another month, they're welcome.
Yeah.
They're very welcome to be.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well.
The interview's from months ago.
I agree. I'm not trying to be instructive. That we have, like, we're gonna vote on this, right? So.
Trying to get a way to move forward because I am concerned that.
Yeah. So I, I hear you. So I, I mean, the three positions that we originally specified were code enforcement, deputy clerk and assistant to highway.
And I think assistant.
Pardon me?
Then the assistant to the highway. Assistant to the highway secretary.
Is a what?
Assistant to the highway is a secretary.
Right. Right.
Two different spots that you're talking about.
So I.
Assistant is a civil service job. It's.
You don't think that's an important public officer?
No.
I mean, I think it's parallel to the deputy clerk position.
That's why I have a deputy highway superintendent.
Right. That's, yeah. So anyway.
I don't think about that.
So, okay.
Like this is not my hill to die on. Like I think there are much more important things to deal with right now, but like this is, I just, I, I mean, I don't really know how to even express how like this feels not.
Discombobulating.
Workable, right? Like I, I, so if you want to move forward with a specific thing, then like modify the language, make it specific and move forward to serve your goal. But like, that's, that's the only thing we can talk about because obviously figuring this all out isn't gonna happen right now in committee in a public meeting. Like, I'm just being realistic, right?
Yeah. I mean, the, what we could do is, you know, and we could define the code officer.
Yes.
Just do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's do that. And, you know, do that. Just.
And then we can modify this later when we can clarify this.
Right.
So Mark, as this is where it's gonna get a little sketchy for me is my deputy superintendent position actually is not a paid position. So moving forward, I can have somebody, I get to appoint whoever I want. Moving forward this, but say I could appoint somebody who lives on the line of, in Summer Hill that has to take over for me when I'm not here, who actually doesn't get paid.
So I'm not, I'm not proposing that we include that position at all. That's not in my discussion. So, yeah. Right now, what, what I just put out was that we restricted just to the code officer position, code enforcement.
Comfortable with that.
And then I, I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, I, I apologize for not having this more lined out. So. Yeah. So, but I.
And we didn't, we didn't have this discussion last week during the end of my day. So it didn't come up yet. So it's not on you.
No, no.
But anyway, I, I think that that would solve our immediate problem and it's just a little more formality. We need to go through another local law. So, but I think, I think it, I, I think it's very clear. And then then we can go from there.
Are you gonna stop that?
I, I mean, this is more restrictive, but it's inclusive of what we originally intended.
Substantive change.
And so I, I think it's okay to, to move forward with this and vote on it tonight. That would be my proposal. You have concerns about that? Yeah.
We, we, we received, we received some legal advice.
Yeah.
In this general regard, that this is appropriate.
But I, I think Jesse's concern is legitimate.
I mean, we can change and name of the law, right?
That would be fine.
It has been.
So, I mean, this is not being more expansive, right?
Correct.
Actually, bringing it down to be more exact so that it's more defined. And so instead of going, what's a public officer? We know exactly what the law's talking about. And I think that was a lot of the public comment was not really understanding what public officers meant. So I think it's in response to that.
What we're struggling with too.
Right.
What the public hearing was for appointed.
Right.
Public officers. Yeah.
Not.
Not just for the code officer. Yeah.
That's my concern.
Could I then recommend that we tweak this in that regard, schedule a new public hearing next, next week and have a special board meeting this week to resolve this issue?
I think that would be great if, if you.
Yeah, I don't think we need to wait a month.
Yeah, I would hope that if people are amenable to a special meeting, then I would like to do that.
I think that makes sense.
I, I will not be here next week.
Would you be remote?
No. It would, no, I'm gonna be in a different time. So.
That's okay.
Do you wanna set it now?
Yeah.
So, so, so the proposals will modify it to be just for the code officer.
Yes.
And then set a public hearing for them.
I mean, we're delineating, just as long as it's delineated. I want to be clear. Like I'm not, this is not like some conspiracy, like I'm totally in support of this law. Like it's not a big deal.
I totally agree.
I think it's important to be clear, given the climate that we're in. I'm not adjurting you about this.
I know. I, I'm totally in agreement.
I, I trust you, Catherine.
Yeah, let me.
It could be just code officer or at least it's just delineated. Whatever delineated.
Delineate the three.
Delineate the three and be done.
Be done. Delineate who you want. That's all we're asking. What offices you, the offices that you want to expand for. That's what we're asking.
That's what we're asking for too.
We just said, we just said that.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Okay.
Delineate just to, to what my point was about deputy highway superintendent and just wanted.
No, that one's not in, that's not in discussion. Deputy highway superintendent.
We're gonna figure that out.
Yeah, that one's not in there. So, so, okay. So.
Yeah.
That would because we need to announce the public hearing and finish the law.
Right.
Time to announce the public hearing. So we need to decide this now.
So we need to decide it now. So we'll, we'll. Do you have the copy handy of the first one?
Yeah.
I got there. I see that. What's that? Yeah, exactly. I think that's what we should use. Yeah. So we use this one.
What is that?
Thank you, Catherine. So this, this local law shall supersede town law, 23 units of patients, the office of deputy town clerks, deputy highway. Oh, it does say deputy highway superintendent and the code officer of the town of Caroline.
Just take deputy highway superintendent out. Great.
Take your wish.
Take it out.
So, Mr. Clarification, what you're proposing is expanding it to adjoining counties, correct?
Yes.
And so basically you live in Broom County, you're out. Broom County doesn't touch that. Right?
If you live in Broom County.
If you live in Broom County, you can apply. Live in next town, Skylar County.
Well, the way it is now, if you don't, if you don't live in Caroline or in adjacent town, you're out.
So how's it?
The thoughts are saying like, how far?
Yeah, that's how far.
How far are you? Are you talking about the five surrounding counties and not outside of?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Yes. So it brings me to my next question. How do we even put these on the county website? Because to qualify to apply on the county website, you have to live in the six surrounding counties.
What?
So to apply for a job on the Tompkins County website, you have to live in one of the adjoining counties. You can't live a county out.
That's what we're proposing.
That's what we're proposing.
So how, how we've been able to put these jobs out anyway?
It was some sort of oddness, is my understanding, right? This is more correct.
So how, how, we, so you, you put it on civil service and then towns are able to, to have more restrictive laws. So. So, yeah.
So can we just settle this so that we can move on tonight? So that the language that we're gonna use.
That was the language. Yeah.
And then do we need to change the title?
Yeah. Well, I don't think so. The law specifies. Well, let's see. Yeah, maybe we do. I think.
Yeah, we need to just clarify the title to those three positions.
Town of Caroline, public office.
Particular or designated.
Yeah. Officers of.
It's gonna be another.
Where the high school students who used to come to watch public process.
We scared the ass out of them.
I mean, this is, this is like.
So I mean, before you take the deputy off there, I guess I need a little more clarification if that's the thing.
I'm putting it on. Is that okay? So.
You're putting it on there?
I'm putting, I, it's included. Is that okay?
I mean, at this point, I guess, because there's other things that tend to come into play is you can't have somebody be a deputy, not get paid, which makes it harder. So I have one of my guys to, so Bill, deputy, deputy right now has to live in the town of Caroline. As of right now, we're surround, surrounding.
Or surrounded townships. And he, he lives in Candor, right?
Okay. I just wanted the clarification.
It's the 2019 one. And prior to that, it was in the town. But we didn't know it. It was, you know. So, okay. So good. As town of Caroline, public officers of deputy town clerks, deputy highway superintendents and code officer. That's, that's awkward. Yeah.
Where are you proposing that?
That was in the title. Trying to change the title to something more descriptive.
Or can it just say of specific Caroline?
Oh, yeah. I like the one below. Yeah. Yeah. I like that. Let's do that. So that makes it a much more succinct title. So we'll. For eligibility.
Of specific or specified town of Caroline.
Of, of certain appointed public officers.
Yeah.
Be 2020.
Yeah.
That's there. Yeah. The person holding the offices, deputy clerks, deputy highway superintendent, code officer, code officer in the town of Caroline need not be a resident. Shall be, shall reside within Tompkins County or within an adjoining county of the state of New York. So that does it. I've got it scribbled down. So.
Okay.
That is our modification and.
Don't let me take that over to Justin.
Do we need to make a motion? Is a motion required?
Yeah, I guess so.
We're still at the discussion of the law, right?
So offer a motion to amend the, the public officers residency local law to, to the, to the language specifying the positions of deputy clerks, deputy highway superintendent and code enforcement officer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Catherine. So now discussion?
No more discussion.
All in favor?
I.
I opposed. So now I'll offer a motion to set a public hearing for this and for the local law, these three positions.
So what are the dates that we need to be beyond? Is there a date or now it's an amendment? It's like, does it all seem to be?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Ten days or not because this has already happened. I mean, it seems honestly silly that we have to.
Yes.
A whole, but like if we do, we do. So.
So Guy said, actually.
He said eight days because Sunday doesn't count.
Yep. Except that, that we can apply for an emergency exemption or whatever. Did you see that?
No.
And if this, I mean, is there a chance that he would say that it's not substantive enough to require any public hearing?
I think there's a possibility.
So then we'll ask. So what is today? Wednesday?
This is Wednesday.
Then we could just schedule a meeting and vote.
Like by the end of this week, we should know from Guy substantive enough that we need to have a whole new public hearing, in which case if it says it.
Yeah.
I will know tomorrow. I mean, my understanding of his advice is that we could even have not done this tonight, but I think it makes sense to do what we're doing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's actually gonna be the case.
So, but we just, to schedule the.
So, but we just, to schedule the public hearing, don't we have to do that now?
I think it would be a good idea.
Yeah, so, but the publication date is probably gonna be Monday. Definitely.
That's the eighteenth, and then has to be how many days from that? Seventh or tenth?
Five. But not including the day that you have the meeting, so.
So I have to do it on Monday, the twenty-fifth?
That'll be awful if we do that.
Well, that's where we're at.
Yeah, okay.
Well, hopefully, hopefully you will not need this at all, right?
Yeah, hopefully not.
So, so say we don't need this, we just get, we have another board meeting and.
Yeah.
Public board meeting. I'm very special needing it anytime like next week.
Okay.
Yeah, so the.
And then we're done. Okay.
Hopefully, also, because otherwise.
So we will. Yeah, okay. So the tentative meeting date would be the twenty-fifth?
If we need a public hearing.
If we need a public hearing, okay, and so.
So let's set that down.
We better set it. So offer a resolution to set a public hearing for the residency of appointed public officers. For the twenty-fifth at what? Nine AM, seven PM, midnight?
Seven PM.
Seven PM.
Yeah.
I didn't hear the damn something.
Seven PM. Monday, the twenty-fifth of July.
Got it, thank you.
The whole, I mean, this is might not be a thing that we need at all.
Well, but, but you guys still gotta meet the, the past, the.
Yeah, but we will, we will be meeting soon.
We'll, we'll do a quicker meet as soon as we're. Okay, seconded by Catherine. Any further discussion?
Oh.
All in favor?
I.
Great, thanks, sorry. Okay. Okay. Offer a resol. So let's see. So we set up a public hearing, so we, we are tabling, we're tabling the resolution.
Yes.
So, great, all in favor, everyone's in favor of that, right? So, okay, so. Offer a resolution to adopt the local law extending the moratorium.
I'll second it.
For your seconded by Kate and open discussion.
What's the risk reward?
Sorry?
What's the risk reward? I'm hearing.
I, I, I remain in favor of the. Of the resolution to extend a moratorium. I think that we've been working incredibly diligently. It's clear to me that we're gonna finish this. I think I have great confidence. Finish the process well within the framework of this. I think that we have, we have all of the material of state law, moratorium. And been very, very self-conscious about these calendars, so I went to the fore.
I think, I think the zoning commissions work very hard and very diligently and very well, and I think that they will continue to do their work. Do it well and as timely as possible. But I don't think we need a moratorium hanging over. I think it's just the risk. And I don't see, you know, I don't see that we're more as far as we're getting anything. I don't see any proposed projects, any, any, I don't see any inkling of any project of any size. You know, some commercial nature that you're concerned about that's in the offing. Well, you know, if we start talking about land use, you know, design, regulations, restrictions. I see more single-family hounds, homes plucked in the middle of a five-acre hayfield than I do threatening commercial projects. Within the town. I just see, you know, hayfields. Retired because there's a house sitting in the middle of them, and we want to preserve farmland and. It just, that's what I've seen over the.
Okay.
Over years, I've seen more of a threat from single-family residential housing than I've seen from commercial development.
If we want to be fair, we shouldn't have a moratorium on single-family housing, obviously.
Amen.
I mean, I would support that, but I know that's not gonna happen, but I'll just say it publicly.
I'll say it public too, publicly too. If you want to have a moratorium, you should be on single-family housing.
So that's, that's a concern for you.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually stupid.
Well, what do you mean by that?
Kind of like, it's not parity, it's like they care about the land.
I mean, I, I see no reason to have a moratorium on single-family housing.
But you said you don't, or you do? You said you don't?
I don't see any, I mean, just unritorically.
I see, it's just like, there's like no parity of like, if we're, what are we concerned about?
That's the word.
Okay. This isn't about the law, like it's not gonna move forward, I think.
It is.
Sharing that like, you know, people are talking about how there's not a lot of development in town, which I actually disagree with, because as I drive around, it's like myself counting like ten houses. All over the place.
It is all over the place.
And like, you know, I'm not saying I have a problem with that necessarily, but like, that's what's visible and very obvious. If you talk about uses and farmland and hayfields, like, what's going on if you just drive on the midline road? It's like, again, I'm not judging and I'm just observing it, like, that is what's happening. It's not about small business or industry, like. That the threat is like suburbanization of this town, to me, like, I don't want to live in suburbia, that's why I live here. But it's not about making this, that's.
Just an observation.
Yeah. I think there are some parts sound that like. I still, I don't know what's going on in the middle room. Thanks, or where's that big parking lot that went in? A lot of people were upset about, yeah. I don't think we need to be talking about specifics. I'm just saying that there are places, you were asking me, where are these places that you're concerned about? That's one I'm concerned about. And if I'm not supposed to talk about specifics, I do not know how to answer your question. I'm concerned about something going in, then we've got a road with big trucks on it, a whole bunch of other stuff. And there hasn't been time to figure this out. And a lot of the town doesn't have that, or some of the town does. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about whether, whether we need it for a whole year, though. That's one thing I was wondering. Do we need a moratorium for a whole year? We make it a shorter one. And still, this team wrote.
Well, we can stop it anytime we want.
Yeah.
I thought, yeah, I. I wonder if that's worth considering, because I did, I did speak with me, and, you know, she thought nine months might be. A reason.
So?
That'd be fine.
Nine months?
Yeah. Yes, I think in principle, the moratorium, you know, makes sense. I think that if. I mean, I, I think your point about our concerns is a good one, but I, I think there are other concerns too, and. Yeah, that's one, one that's more insidious and has been just kind of going on for a long time. I, yeah. So, and I also wondered about. Guy didn't think it was necessary, but, you know. We could remove the clause about. The possibility of an extension to give it a time certain. Which is talked about in the division of the D O S document, but. We also pointed out, even if you do that, you can still extend it, but it could, it could still be more of a statement of intent. I think the board. I mean, the board did not want to make this consideration for an extension. I don't think any of us wanted to do that, and so. You know, my feeling is that. And, yeah, you know, I talked with county planning and in. You know, the. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I wonder if we can work more intentionally with. Plan to, to get it done in a, in a specified amount of time, right? What John Dirk was probably said, you know, that's the way you're supposed to do it, supposed to, you know. Direct your activity so that you can extinguish the moratorium as quickly as possible. I guess from the discussion here, we have to decide whether we're, you know. Whether we have concerns. To serve a moratorium.
I don't feel we have concerns that want more.
Yes.
Just, I think, you know, the zoning commission is working very diligently, and even once they've got their. Proposal to, to us, it seems to me that that's something that, that should be an ongoing committee of the town. It's just kind of regularly reviewing what zoning rules are, what's needed, just, you know, what's going on in the town. I mean, they don't need to be working, meeting twice a month, but, you know, this is a, this is a river rule. This isn't a static thing.
Well, there would be some group like that.
So, but I just, I just don't see any thing in, in, you know, these moratoriums, there's the bycatch of, you know. Just who reads the law, how it's read. I just, I just don't, I don't see anything we. No, I don't see any. Any threats. And it's just, it's contentious issue, it's, you know, we've got cautionary advice. Cerris and county planning and I just, I just. I, I think it's a mistake for this board to continue to. Hold this moratorium. That's my feeling.
I knew you thought that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the, the localized office is. Is. You know, of course, it's a long document that's written by a lawyer.
Who wrote the date?
But it's, it's sensitive to the towns, you know, it doesn't catch every, it, it, I think it's, it's. Course, right, it's catching.
Yeah.
It's looking for things that we would truly be concerned about.
Yeah.
And it has a provision to, you know, release any that get caught that don't deserve it.
But who wrote this?
Got a problem.
He did? And in the waiver section, if this is passed, should the waiver section have a time limit on the waiver? If you grant somebody a waiver for a project, should that waiver have a sunset clause or a time? We grant a project a waiver. We don't have to say what it is, and if that project doesn't get at least started. Or something happened within two years, should that waiver then become null and void? Or not? I mean, it doesn't say anything about a time on the waiver.
Somebody's waiting to get in.
I don't know, I just, it's just.
Good question, because two years from now, we could have other laws on the books that would be split potentially with the waiver. Of.
Well.
The waiver is a waiver for the moratorium, not for any.
Not for the project.
Right.
Project.
It just lets them, it would let them go forward with their review process.
Right.
They still have to comply with whatever town review process it was, so.
Yeah.
I, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Right, but if they didn't go through the review process and waited a couple of years.
They had got through their review process.
Right, and just to be clear, then that review process could be very different.
Of course.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Right, of course.
I said, I said plenty about this, I don't have anything else.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'd like to say that, you know, I. I don't really, I don't like the moratorium. I don't like the idea of continuing it. However, I think, you know, the zoning commission took a lot of time, a lot of time answering questions, doing outreach. I sat down and read the answers to all those questions. And I understand why the process has been taking so long, and I want to support them in that, and. So I would go for this, even, I, I'd like it not to be a full year, but. That's how I feel about.
Mark, you're thinking.
The other question would be. If we vote on it tonight, or if we, we want to wait and vote on it. At our subsequent, we're gonna have a subsequent meeting, one kind or another.
Why, why would we not vote on it tonight?
I'm asking, just to.
I mean, it makes sense for me to, we've had the public hearing, we've had it, we've had it written, we've had it before us. We discussed it at the agenda meeting, we have it here. I see no reason not to vote on it tonight.
Well, I, may I just point out, I mean, I, I hear you and I respect what you're saying, but I have, I, I just have to call this out, which is like, one of the things that you just said. As to why we have, are moving forward is, we had a public hearing, and in that public hearing, we heard several people express concern. About introducing, you know, having a public hearing and voting on the same day, and I'm not like, everyone's entitled to their opinion about that. But I guess I just want to be clear about, if, 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 if. How do I say this? If we heard anything in the public hearing that is changing our minds, then that would be the reason to.
Right.
Change our minds. If we haven't, then that's fine and legitimate, but then let's just like.
Yep, well stated, that's exactly right.
I'm very happy to say that I listened very carefully to everything that was said in the public hearing. And it hasn't, it didn't change my mind about this. I totally recognize that there's a strong difference of opinion in the town about this. And, and I've heard it, heard it very, very loudly. I recognize why that opinion exists. But I think given the progress that the zoning commission has made, the hard work. That continued balance is necessary for that to be included, so I'm in favor.
Yeah, I. Historically. There's been the public hearing and the vote. I'm just saying, somebody said historically that didn't happen.
I was gonna point that out as well.
Yeah, and, and historically, this is what you do. You have a public hearing, and then you have a vote, and I think that if. Something came up. In the, in the public comment that, that. Would raise questions for me, or hadn't considered, or hadn't heard. I know, we could table it, we could put things off, there, there are different ways to manage that. But to adopt the idea that we don't vote on it the same night we have the public hearing, I. I can't support that.
Understood, yeah.
Totally fair. I just want to make sure we acknowledge that.
Mark, can I make a statement? There are two very pertinent facts that are not brought up. One was the town lawyer said he didn't suggest he extend it, and the other was the counties that he suggested. That's what she just said. That was not brought up.
So, Bruce, I mentioned that the, they brought up that the, the time was long. And they didn't, the county did not recommend. I, the county did not recommend more than three years, so.
You said that if, if. I want to hear the report when we're just at this meeting, not at.
Well, okay, so.
So we should have added the.
No, the public hearing is to hear comments from the public and then we discuss it in the meeting.
Don't you think the public, the public hearing should know that the lawyer didn't say?
The public knows that we are going to discuss it in the meeting. If they want to come, they can come. Please excuse me. This is really not cool.
I know it's not. That's cool at all. This is one problem.
I feel exactly the same, Bruce. I feel exactly the same. So. So I. You know, I really do appreciate that the public comes and engages and honestly, everybody is, is so respectful in general. I do appreciate that, so I want to, want to make that point.
You run a good meeting. I've always said that, Mark.
Hurt me, Pete?
I said, you do run a good meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
You do cut us some slack.
Yes. So, um, I want to return to this discussion and collect my thoughts. Based on the feedback that, you know. I, 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 I would advocate, um, and. Based on the input from Nan, I would, I would advocate that we make it a nine months. More toward, that would be my adjustment to what's on the table. That's a simple adjustment and. I sense if, if I understand that. You know. And I will say, you know, when I, I did discuss it with a guy and he said, just leave it at a year and you terminate it early if you get done. But I. I have also heard that, you know. It's, it's been, it'll be, you know, August one will be twenty six months and, um, I think it would be good to. I think nine months is a reasonable. Time given that that's the, the recommendation of the planner, but I, I don't want to do something irresponsible either, so.
I mean, ironically, the last time. One of twelve months and our attorney recommended eighteen months.
Yeah.
So I, I'd be fine with nine months. I would like this entire process personally to be over by nine months. I think it's time. A lot of work has gone into this many, many years. And it's time for us to move reasonably to one way or the other. And nine months would be a good timeframe and I'm perfectly, I'm happy to. To present that timeline of a moratorium to the zoning commissioners incentive to perhaps meet more often and just get the work done. So I find.
Nine months would be June first.
July, May.
So shall we make that edit? Are, are you comfortable with that? Okay. That's my offer, so.
I think we've had a long discussion. Sean, one other question.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so. Yeah, I think, I think I've, I've said all my thoughts about it. Is everybody? Shared their thoughts. I, I agree that, um, I mean. From what I've read, I mean, this is what land use moratorium, our design force, that a municipality. Can do this in a responsible way. And, um. So I feel a responsibility to do it, a responsibility to the zoning commission and, um. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with this and I will support it, so.
With a question.
Can I, can I ask a question? So, so do you feel like board deliberation on this should also be covered under moratorium? Or is this is just intended for the zoning commission's work?
No, this is a moratorium.
Oh.
For nine months. For me, it's a moratorium. It doesn't matter who's doing what during the moratorium. It's a moratorium.
Yeah, just about it's, it's assumptions on how long board will deliberate on this when zone.
We're talking, we're, we're not making those assumptions.
Yeah, we don't, but this would include that. You're correct. This would include that, so. So before we vote, does anyone else have anything to, to share before we vote? So I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So. Measure passes three to two.
Thank you for a very good discussion. I mean, it was.
Thanks, Bruce. All right. Onwards.
Resolution XX.
I'm so glad we got there. All right, so I will, uh, offer a resolution authorizing the purchase order for a new ten wheeler plow truck. Do I have a second? Second by Cal. And, um. I'll read the resolution. Whereas the highway department is in the process of replacing its fleet of agent dump trucks. And whereas the highway department's equipment management plan is to establish a shorter term rotation cycle of purchasing, selling that will reduce repair expenses and increase resale value. And whereas the highway department's next prior purchase is to replace one of the two agents dump plow trucks remaining in the fleet. And whereas the highway superintendent recommends replacing or recommends placing an order now for this truck because of at least a two-year lease. Because of supply bottlenecks and whereas the truck will be ordered from a competitive vendor. Under the New York State Good Program, which will ensure competitive purchase price, therefore be resolved, the Carolina Town Board hereby authorize the highway superintendent to place. Uh, purchase order for a new ten wheeler plow truck. So. Already did the, any discussions or questions?
Can I, Bob, can I just ask you a question about, so how does this work now? So we put in the order now. Basically, the price, the price then is fixed now and then we just wait until the deliverer has the word. I don't even give you a price, man. This is all stuff, it's never, we never had to wait this long to get one. So basically what we're doing now is. We're putting our name on a list. And wherever we fall on that list is when our opportunity comes up. So right now, all we're doing is simply putting. The town of Carolina on the list, um, gets close to where our number comes up. Then we spec it out and hopefully within that time they can lock the price.
So, so then when that, when that happens, do we have another discussion or are we just? Dependent upon whatever, you know, what I'm just trying to understand.
That was a question I had too. Um. Like, what do you tell, they tell you, it's gonna be two and a half million dollars for that truck?
Well, I mean, you don't have to pay two and a half million dollars. You're gonna pay whatever the market state it there, whatever state it is at the time.
Right.
I guess what I'm trying to go over is just if we're, if we're totally obligated, that's all I'm asking. I don't know as if we're totally obligated. I mean, people back out of contracts all the time.
Yeah, that's just what I was wondering. This is kind of an unusual situation.
It's two years. Um, what I was told is there's, well, there's two markups for model years because you won't get it. You, you'll, you'll get a twenty four, so. And in two thousand and four, there's a new emissions thing that's going out, which is going to be a little bit of an added expense. Nobody has that number yet, but it, it's the year that we had some more stuff to do, so. But yeah, hopefully, I mean, on the, on the flip side, hopefully in two years, the prices are going down from what they are now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But if we don't get on this list, we're number.
Sure, sure.
You know, we could be number. Three thousand. I mean, I'm happy to do this myself.
Yep. Any other thoughts or questions? Yeah.
I mean, my only question was like, I go generally about the like prioritization of what's happening when and related to the plan that was pitched, the color that we don't.
Yeah, I mean, as of today. We have two older trucks. We, we still have a nineteen ninety nine Sterling and we have a two thousand and ten international, the two thousand and ten international is currently. In the shop, it's, it's dead in the water, so. At this point, that's kind of the problem, truck. Things may change within two years, so. The worst than two thousand and ten, but, um, we're just. You know, trying to.
Right, I mean, I'm totally supportive. So I guess my only ask would be like that we put this in context of a long term, like, you know, as you're doing what, what we're like looking at, so it's not just. You know, every time something pops up, we're like, oh, we needed this, which I know we're really doing, but.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of that, right? And then we'll be able to take that and set it in and see where it fits, like, like the piece of the puzzle, right?
It's kind of a yearly update or sometimes it's a six month update. Just taking the worst piece and it just things lead fraud, everything it's, you know, which makes that terrible planning part because we put it all out there for the next fifteen years. This is what we want to make and what we want to do and what we tend to. Maybe kind of stop around a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, I just want to thank you because, you know, we've been having this conversation for about a year and a year and a half and.
Yeah.
And we're on track now. Really, the only thing we haven't decided. Totally is how to pay up for stuff in, in the future. I mean, that's, that's still a conversation that I have, but. Clearly, this has been very, for me, it's been extremely helpful. And I know it's taken a little bit of time.
Yeah.
But I think it's been, I mean, we've learned a lot also. Really excited to look forward.
Check all vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So then. So. Yeah. Are we supposed to read this now?
No, I just, I just wanted, I just got it. I got it at.
Okay.
Five minutes before I came and I just wanted to get it to. This, yeah, it's not fair. Hand out a three page thing and I also got an email from Barb Cohen, who I could, which I could not open.
No, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Oh, it's coming your way.
Yeah.
Okay, wait.
I'm gonna read it. It's not that long, I guess.
Okay.
I got this. Did you read this?
What is this petition? Well, it's, it's not, it's not a petition. It's just kind of a, uh, just. Trying to give you a background of what's going on with the history room, the amount of work that Shuley's been putting in. Barb Cohen has, uh. Significant health problems with her husband. She's already back in North Carolina and there's. And there's a lot of work to be done with just.
So, so, yeah, so.
I mean, I don't know where to kind of start, but just, you know, there's a lot of filing and paperwork that needs to get up done there. The extent of Shuley's work is kind of going past problems too.
So, but, so did you see my email today about this?
Yeah.
So, the, so I, I really think this is a question for Barb.
Yeah.
And it's really.
Yeah.
Doable.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I, I need deadlines. I gotta get started somewhere, so. Um, and Barb, like I said, Barb sent me an email kind of, which I haven't been able to open.
Oh.
So we have to get some technical assistance. You send it in some sort of format that might. I get some help from Peter or somebody to adjust me so I can read it.
Maybe if you forwarded it to us, some of us might be, machines might be able to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but just by the last minute.
Unless it's like a virus or something.
No, I don't, I hope not.
No, I got it. I opened it.
Oh, you did.
So.
I'm bored.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay, so anyway, so I just want, you know, the history club.
That's a letter from the history club.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what, I see. I didn't understand.
Okay.
Just, yes, wanted to support.
So, I mean, like, yeah, so does that make sense to you that?
It just. Process and protocol is, is good, yeah. You know, I just kind of jumped in with.
No, that's, that's fine. I mean, I think we have a solution, right? It's really straightforward. She has a budgeting account and.
Yeah.
Yeah, but maybe I'm not understanding everything.
Or, you know, just how's this gonna be going forward to, you know, next year, you know, if someone would put in a budget, I don't know that we're proposing. You know, we'd like to compensate, see that Shuley's compensated for the amount of work she's put in. And it's not like creating a town position for forever, but just what, what the amount of work.
So that.
Julie here.
That would be like a budget request, which that goes out next month.
Surely was here.
Yeah, she's sorry back there.
Um, but. I don't know, she's just putting in a lot of time and effort. It's just, you know, she.
I totally know that. I totally get it.
So she would get hit on the budget for this year and then for next, when your question about next year, we would talk about when in August.
Yeah.
But my suggestion would be that, that. I mean, I don't know, maybe Barb is, is preoccupied. I know she's.
She's very preoccupied.
But at least the historian, maybe Jen. You know, they provide, you know, budget requests go out in August, so.
Yeah, just however we need to.
Plan accordingly.
Yeah.
But like I said, if she needs stuff done now, she has an ample vegetarian account for that purpose.
Yeah. Or to just, I don't know, just need to talk about a little bit personally, you know, one on one in, in a public meeting.
Okay.
So, versus just kind of emailing back and forth.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, okay.
Do you feel good about everything? Is that what you needed?
Yep.
Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's great. Yeah, the whole idea is to get a digital and archive it so it doesn't get lost and. Somebody's at.
Yeah, and she's been doing, you know, portuguese and stuff.
Yep.
Yeah.
Every resource for the.
So.
On archiving stuff? County?
Yep.
Does.
Laser feature.
Job on laser feature as long as you label it, Rob.
Right.
And that's.
I have discussed that with her too.
Yeah, labeling is a key, very key.
Yeah. I mean, I think that is a really, I think that should be.
Valuable resource.
Yeah.
Right, forward the court, did it and.
Yeah, we have time now.
Yeah.
Because of what? We're done using it.
But, you know, that's, that's, you know, give it away and then, you know.
Maybe the ten level paper.
Yeah.
Well, the point that you raised, your letter raised about fire protection is a whole other thing. I mean, we don't talk about it now, but that, I was not aware that there's evidently no. There was some concern raised about fire protection of, of, you know, documents, which, I, like, if that is a true concern, then I, I would advocate for at some point when we deal with the. Whatever this is, budget, I mean, there's, there's plenty of money in the budget, but like, if there's stuff that needs to, right, to buy like a fire safe. Box to put stuff in, like, that seems pretty simple.
Or stuff, if stuff is labeled fish and not here, or there's a copy of somewhere else.
The way to do it, so.
They're the original, but.
Right, but like that's.
Or, I don't know, on the other hand, there's like. And there's, you know, like a cabinet from General Kent Lines House, you know, up there. It's like, anyway.
Wow.
That's another issue, I guess.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Yeah.
There's a general conversation to have about the historic, you know. Star preservation historian in the town, I guess that could be like a separate agenda item at some other time, right, to talk about that.
That's a huge.
Yeah, I mean. Or, or maybe just, you know, the kernel of what I get, you know, support for history. Of the town. Um, I mean, the stuff I see with cemeteries, these ancient, or not ancient, very old. Tombstones, you know, you can't read anymore, you know, and somebody, you know, if that could be part of the history thing, yeah, or just, you know, supporting a history room is. Gonna record that stuff and there's gonna be a record of it somewhere. I mean, this is, you know.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah, this is dangerous.
Yeah, but to support it.
Right.
Yeah.
To actually have someone do that as a job instead of relying on.
Right.
to volunteer to get interested in.
So, you know, there used to be a lot more volunteers coming in. Um, when, at least it's my understanding during the more the heart of the COVID pandemic, there was more volunteers coming in. Now that people have been kind of required to go back, start going back to work more, there's less volunteers coming in. I don't know if it's true or not, that's what I.
Well, that Caroline history Facebook has been really great.
Really great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great. I mean, the thing about the number of volunteers coming in, I guess, what Barb was telling me, which is, haven't seen volunteers. And except there's one, one person that's still coming in, a lot volunteering. So, anyway, it's great, great to have this on.
Yes.
Can I do the add resolution so that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Please do.
Okay. Um, so, uh, you have the resolution in front of you. I'm actually gonna ask, um, Andrew, I have the chair of the ad committee to introduce it, if that's okay. And then we, um.
You can, yeah, a board member should move it and then.
I'm gonna move it, but to hear more about why we're doing it.
Totally. So, do you wanna, so do you want to?
Do you want me to move it first?
Move it in second and then Andrew can.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do you want me to read the whole resolution?
It's up to you. It's it's your choice. We we do it one way or the other, and Andrew's gonna cover the same bases. You can let him do it.
Actually, no, but.
Yeah, okay, I'll read it. So it's the resolution requesting town board support for municipal agricultural and farmland protection plan grant application. Um, whereas the town of Caroline's plan has expressed a commitment to preservation of rural character, protection of farmland and supporting at productive agricultural practices. And whereas the town of Caroline is currently engaged in land use planning efforts. And whereas the town's agricultural committee has resolved that land use should be consistent with a robust future for agricultural activities in the town. And whereas, this is important, the town of Caroline lacks specific local data of farming conditions, agricultural practices and production to inform land use planning decisions. And whereas the Caroline Agriculture Committee has stated its willingness to fully engage in the management and work activities in the creation of a municipal agricultural and farmland protection plan. Now, be it resolved at the Caroline Town Board hereby supports submission of a grant application for the creation of a municipal agricultural and farmland protection plan. Specifically, in this support, is agreement to utilize the town's grant application gateway account, which is required, and provide the required financial matching should the grant application be approved. And I excerpted from the, um, request for application materials, the what the match requirements are. Um, the anticipated maximum is nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand dollars would be the town's contribution? How much is the total then?
Thirty two thousand dollars.
How much though?
So something, something that I'll clarify here is, right, so, so the matching application is like, right, the the town, the matching part up to eighty percent of the match can be in kind, like whether it's ag committee members on here or common or velvet being involved somehow or whatever. So it's like, right, realistic amount of output in cash is probably going to be something more like two thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, what is the town's grant application gateway?
It's, you have any, so that the the applicant needs to be from a municipality or an organization that has access. We have a gateway account, right?
Yeah.
And it's just a platform.
It's just a gateway to the state, state funding.
Oh.
Yeah.
So like, I couldn't do it as an individual person, but the town uses their gateway. So I'm just formally requesting.
I guess we'll let you use it. It's okay.
Okay. Um, yeah, so the request is support, financial, as well as use of the gateway. Please and thank you.
I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
Great, I'll second that.
See.
And, uh, discussion or questions for Catherine? So, yeah, I I guess, um, yeah. I'll ask the general question.
Yeah.
What are the, I mean, what are the benefi- what do you see as the real, the benefits of?
Yeah.
I wanted to talk to us about that.
I'm gonna yield that to Andrew.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so, so as we've started the process of looking at land use regulation for our town, something that keeps coming up is the idea of farm and preservation. The the idea is prominent in both the original and our device comprehensive plans. And at this point, other than the formation of an agricultural committee, we haven't started any actionable process with the specific goal of agriculture and preservation in mind. What what we're talking about here is the beginning of that process, but something I'd like to clarify is that this should not be viewed solely as an effort directed at assisting farmers currently in the town of Caroline, but whether it's forward planning to ensure food security of future generations, with, because it's been beautifully exemplified over the past two years by the pandemic, war and the rain, droughts, wildfires, and other weather extremes, and all the associated supply chain issues that as we continue to have more and more issues like this globally, local food production is going to become more and more vital. And the basis of local food production is the undeveloped land for it to occur on. So in the name of the public, food security, I'm going to encourage all of us to start this process.
So what? I'm a little confused. So, the, the, okay, the plan, what are the parameters of the plan?
So, so right, basically, it's like, I mean, it's like a comprehensive plan, but specifically directed at ag and ag and land preservation. It's like, and right, basically, like, the specifics can be anything that we, as an ag committee or town, determine it to be. It's like, right, it's basically like providing us funding to have people at county do like GSI mapping and surveying and et cetera. Um, so like look at what, like current agricultural conditions in the town and then start to actually look at and pursue tools that we can use with the specific goal of ag net for which there are all, there are all sorts of infinite possibilities of things that other municipalities are doing with more or less success. Um, but right, like the first, the first part of that process is, is looking at what is happening in the town and determining what tools are available for us.
So the vision can be very specific. And in fact, so Erica, as well as Andrew, met with Monica Roth to to talk about the beginning of this process, to even ask, like, is this something we could even do? We had to find out, like, the grant application. Yes, it's rolling, like, we can apply, that's great.
Okay, so tell me about the grant you're applying for.
The grant we're applying for helps to solicit funding and support to undertake the process of agricultural planning.
Of making, of making this, and what's your deadline?
And.
There is no deadline.
It's rolling, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
One of the reasons I was asking about the parameters was the, the, um, you know, the grants that I'm looking at, uh, with the county, has the specific, your plan has to have this, 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 and this, and that. So, I mean, do you, is there like, have they given you guidance like that, like?
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly, as much as you all want to read, I will happily send it to you. Um, there is a, you know, a packet of information about how we need to meet criteria. So, for example, what I didn't read out loud is that um, like I wrote the town's agricultural committee, and you know, so I wrote I eat agricultural and farmland protection board. Because according to the application materials, a requirement is that a town has to have an active agricultural and farmland protection board.
Right.
Which is our activity, but like, that's just like a, a title thing to make sure that we meet, you know, criteria.
But that's what I wanted to know, because you were looking for the criteria, like for free form, so.
You know, there's still, there's still, there are like specific logistical things like that, but in terms of what goes in the plan, that is Andrew saying, like, it can be, and we want it to be totally uniquely Caroline. And that's what Monica had actually recommended and endorsed and said that one of the challenges of some of the towns that have done this is that they do a really good plan, but then the implementation might not be there. And so we really want to learn. We're now in the process of soliciting and reading other towns' plans and actually looking at their application process that, as much as we can find their materials and see like, what was, uh, you know, in their application, what's now in the plan, and what are they actually doing? But because the plan's only as good as like what we're gonna try to do with it. So we're really hoping like a perfect example of something that came up, you know, that's like a very Caroline thing is, well, what are the size of farms at this point? How do we even define a farm? Are we really just talking about like traditional flat, open fields? Or are we dealing with a lot of slope? Are we dealing with silver pasture? What are we doing with forestry? How about like mushroom cultivation? Like, there's all sorts of things that wouldn't necessarily be considered like traditional farming, you know, in a particular way. And so we're, as the ag committee is trying very hard to reflect what is very, what's Caroline, but what is, what is ag in Caroline, which is not ag in Dryden, it's not ag in Cuyahoga County, like, it's not and and other places. And that's the information that even as we're looking at the land use planning, like, the maps that we're looking at in terms of soils don't really have a lot of meaning, if any, to the people who are doing the work in the town. And that's something that I'm.
So it tends to be county maps.
Yeah, but like, there's a lot of really good ag activity that's happening on really shitty soil, to be honest, right? And so if we're just gonna look at soil and say, we're gonna preserve these places, that's not necessarily reflecting like where, after ag is happening in Caroline. And so we really want to know that, but that takes none of us individually, or even collectively have enough time, or like we can't, it's like a full time job. And so this is helping us find a planner, find a grad student, find someone to like help with the work.
I'm very happy to support this.
I am too.
And I think we should just move forward with it.
Cool.
That's just.
Great.
So is, are, does maybe a little, you know, I I think about Don and Katie House's, um, food futures thing, so connected with, I mean, he's on your committee, right? So.
And he's very much in support of this.
Yeah.
We need, we need to vote on it.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Any other, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thanks, Catherine.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so there's the resolution and, um, anything for the minutes of July sixth for Jesse? Only applause.
Thank you.
Uh, the minutes are thereby approved. Thanks, Jesse. And a resolution to approve the vouchers. In the amounts of, where's my report? There it is. A fund eighteen thousand, a hundred and forty three dollars and ten cents, DA fund seventy eight thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety seven cents. Streetlight Fund, a hundred and forty nine dollars and eighty nine cents. Seconded by Tim. Any questions or?
Why was the town board, I will, electric bills at the end? I were fifteen hundred bucks. Nothing's changed. Yeah, this, or was it just, you know, misreading the month before?
Or catch up?
Yeah, it was just, it was way out of line of all.
Last month was twelve hundred.
Was it? Okay. Just.
Yeah.
Actually, it didn't come for years.
Anything else?
What, what work is TG Miller's doing, been doing on equal show? They just, they had engineering bills, just.
Yeah, they're getting that. Just finishing the plan and praying and getting it to bid.
Okay.
And then they, the other part of that TG Miller bill was, I guess, they did some engineering for the Buffalo Road bottom part there. Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. All in favor of paying the town bills?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Is it possible that the zoning map that's in the town hall foyer over there could have the state land delineated on it? Because if I look at it, you know, here's the hamlets and here's the water resources, but I just think it would be, I've just been sending people that ask me, go look at the map of town hall.
Yeah, there's one in the library and there's one at the atrium.
Yeah.
They put the state land on it along with, you're saying, put the state land on the same map?
Yeah, just so, you know.
No, I don't, I mean, we can ask, uh, basically what the planner's been trying to do is keep the map as simple as possible, so it'd be very easy for them to do that.
Yeah, I mean, the things I've seen in others.
Try not to confuse people.
Yeah, or if it's gonna confuse people, then I would, don't think it's a good idea, but I just.
All that, that's real fast, yeah, sure.
In, well.
We have no reason to conduct a secular session, right? We don't have a secular.
Yeah, we're, I'm not gonna call that because we're not ready to do that, so we'll wait till we pass our law to allow appointment, so.
So we might know by tomorrow.
You'll know. You'll know in the one, no, I can do that, so. Yeah.
The streetlights, there was some talk about some baffles, maybe that would drift the light down or anything.
Yeah, I, so, um, I'll need to follow up with them to see if they, that's the only feedback I've gotten, I, you know, I hugged them last week about the arm, the one at Snyder Hill and the other two lights at Speedville. I think they were gonna try to get those in, they got in the arm and so that's.
Well, they don't have the arm.
You have the arm, what? Do you, for the Snyder Hill one?
I don't know where it, it just showed up. I didn't even know what it was.
It just showed up? Today?
It's by June. It's on Monday. Actually, it was last Thursday.
Okay.
It just showed up and one of the guys happened to be driving mine.
It was laying out there. Huh?
But treating them to the lights.
Yeah, I asked him about that, so they.
I got an email from.
Oh, did you?
Somebody.
I didn't get it.
And it said that.
Cause I.
We haven't uh, done the training. You must have got it, because I think you replied to it. So I sent the training schedule.
So I contacted them to say, what about the training? So I don't.
They're saying either, so.
Okay. So they replied to that. Okay, so did they schedule?
Replied to, I mean, I was.
Did they schedule a training? Okay, right.
So I don't know how I missed the.
Yeah, they replied and and copied you. And what he did is he, I think he, he replied to the company or the ubiquia company that was doing the training, saying, hey, what Caroline says, they don't have the training, what's going on? So I think that's where it's at. We're waiting to hear. Well, I'm glad you picked up the arm there.
Speaking of lights, we, I I went to lunch today, um, and the cameras have got to be a pretty good thing off.
What's that?
We talked about cameras in the original plan, but wanted to make sure everything connected first. Um, but the cameras, I've actually got to be a pretty big thing, uh, weather wise. I know that the county's talking about doing something, I think that's something that the town has to start using them, you know, for for weather, so. Are these our security cameras?
No, they.
I guess you could use them as security cameras.
But they, they look at the road conditions.
Basically, I mean, this is right in the.
Turned into a headlight to not sponsor.
Wow. Streets of bad.
Can we drive you out?
Yes, we can. Is everybody ready to?
Yes.
To go to bed?
Yes.
Okay.
My bedtime alarm went off during this meeting, so just for the record.
You've been late.
My bedtime alarm.
Yeah, 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 so. So, for motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Cal, Cal got it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.